Counselor McLean. Counselor Meehan.
I'm here.
Thank you. Counselor Penner. Counselor Spencer.
Here.
Thank you. Counselor Walcott. Counselor Wong.
Here.
Thank you. Counselor Wines. Thank you. Counselor Crowe. Mayor Gondak. And Chair Sharp.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
The city of Calgary, where the Bow and Elbow Rivers meet, was historically a place of confluence, where the sharing of resources, ideas, and opportunities naturally come together. Long before Scottish settlers named it Calgary, the original indigenous nations of this area had their own names for the land. In the Blackfoot language, it's called Mukinsis. The Ithaca-Nakota-Wiscatabee First Nations refer to this place as Wiscapawee de, and the people of the Satina Nation call it Gudsis. The Métis call the Calgary area Otiskwane. We would like to take this opportunity to appreciate and acknowledge that we are gathered on the ancestral and traditional territory of the Blackfoot Confederacy, made up of the Syksica, Begani, Omaska-Begani, Guiney First Nations, the Ithaca-Nakota-Wiscatabee First Nations comprised of the Chinky, Bear Spa, and Good Stony First Nations, and the Satina First Nation. The city of Calgary is also homeland to the historic Northwest Métis and to the Oteemisapawa Métis Government, Métis Nation Battle River Territory, Knows Hill Métis District 5, Elbow Métis District 6. We acknowledge all indigenous people who have called and made Calgary their home. A couple of things this morning that I want to let everybody know is we do have a hard stop at 5. And you know, we could probably be done by 5 if we all listen to each other's questions throughout the day today and make sure that we're being efficient. Otherwise, we do have a scheduled overflow, which is Monday, the 16th. So we don't want to be mid-through or almost done an item and then have to recess. So let's be diligent. Otherwise, we will be here Monday. And we will take our regular break at 12 and at 3:15. So one hour and 30 minutes at 3:15, seeing on where we're at. With that, can I get a confirmation of the agenda? Vice Chair Meehan, anyone opposed to what's on the agenda today? Hearing and seeing. Oh.
Sorry.
Yes, Counselor Chabot.
Yes, question in regards to the agenda. On the agenda is the Calgary Plan. And it's, I'm just curious as to the urgency of this, this plan moving forward today. It's kind of like, only just received the final draft of it. I personally have not had a chance to review it in detail, let alone review it in detail with my community associations. And I just need some clarity around why, what's the urgency? Why do we have to approve this today? And also, is there an opportunity for the public to present to council outside of the infrastructure and planning? Like, if this gets approved now and goes to council, will the public will be able to participate in discussions around this plan when it goes to council? Or is this their opportunity?
Okay, I will have Ms. Davies-Murphy up at the podium here to answer your questions. Thank you.
Thank you. There is an opportunity for the public to participate at the public hearing, which we tentatively have planned for February 4th of 2025. And we have been doing a lot of public participation through engagement for quite a while over the last, at least a year on this. We would love to have the opportunity to present to committee today. And if committee so chooses to set a different timeline, then we'd be open to that as well.
Okay, well, I don't have anything drafted, per se. But I was hoping that we could table this matter till the new year to at least give me an opportunity. While I appreciate the administration as engaged with the folks in the community, I have not personally engaged with my communities through my town halls and would like that opportunity prior to us debating it in council. Because, like I say, this is all, kind of seems like it's kind of rushed for me.
Thanks, Counselor. Yeah, thanks, Counselor Chabot. There are now people in the queue. Counselor Wong, go ahead.
Thank you, Chair. I'll express a similar sentiment that Counselor Chabot said. But actually, what I'm more disturbed about was that I had spent my weekend going through this, and I spent my evening going through this. And in between all that, spent my weekend with a number of community assoc- not community association, community festival events, and similarly last night was CMLC. But I was disturbed that we got amendments that caused me to have to go back through my notes and correlate to the point that by about 2 o'clock in the morning, I kind of nodded off and didn't finish it all. So I'm concerned to the fact that I haven't had a chance to go through all the amendments to today either. Thank you.
Counselor Meehan.
Yeah, maybe what I can offer is I think it would be a missed opportunity to just refer it back and not have a discussion and ask questions today. So it's always within the committee's purview to send it back, to request more time. But I would say, just at this stage of the meeting, the confirmation of the agenda, I suggest that we go forward. And then maybe after the discussion, people will feel the same or feel differently. But I wouldn't want to waste the time that we're here for today.
Counselor Demong.
I just wanted to echo the sentiments of Counselor Chabot. I agree wholeheartedly. It seems rushed.
Okay. Oh, Counselor Wines.
Can we just cut it from the agenda today? Like, I'm sorry, if you haven't been able to correlate the memo we got last night to questions to ask of admin, I feel like we're going to go in circles. So check here, around 9 o'clock, we got an updated little email about this. So I still have to go through everything that was sent to us last night.
Okay, I'm gonna just interject a second here. Clerks, to remove something from the agenda, it needs to be a vote? Or are we tabling this? How, what's the best procedural way to do this?
So if you would like to refer this back to administration to do more work, that would have to be council that does that. So this item would have to go to council for council to make that determination to refer it back. However, if committee wanted to send this to the next IPC to have more time to read through it, then they could just refer or postpone it to the next meeting.
Okay, so, committee, I would need someone to do either or. You're referring this back to council, which is technically next Tuesday, or you're referring this back to the January Infrastructure Planning Committee for more time.
I'd like to postpone it to January. So, and then that way, we don't even waste committee's time today. We have a lot where the pipe is on the agenda.
Could clerks have something in front of them? Or to postpone this to the next infrastructure planning? And I, we would need to know that because we have to set agendas for the next meeting, which Counselor Meehan and I do in a couple of weeks. So Counselor Chabot, I will go to you. You're in the queue again.
Yeah, no, it's exactly the motion that I wanted to propose, is that we table this to the next infrastructure and planning meeting. Unless council has given direction that this return back to council by a certain date, otherwise, I think it's certainly within the purview of this committee to table this matter till the next infrastructure and planning meeting. Honestly, I certainly would benefit, would appreciate the opportunity to review this in more detail and maybe even further engage administration on the report prior to actually debating it in public.
Okay, so just as a heads up, remember, committee can have members of the public speak. Council cannot. Just remember that. So Counselor Chabot or Counselor Wines, I expect that you'll send something to the clerks as I go to the next person in the queue, which is.
My email's not working, so I can't actually send something. So Counselor Wines, I'll lean on you to draft something as far as the tabling or the referral back to, back to infrastructure planning for the next infrastructure planning meeting.
Okay, can we get that done, please? And then I will go to Counselor Wong, and we'll take a pause for clerks to get ready.
Thank you, Chair. A note on our 2025 calendar in January that the next IPC meeting is the January 8th. In other words, one week after New Year's Day. And given that Counselor Chabot indicated getting out to the community, and we are on vacation, everything else as such, is the January 8th IPC the appropriate one? Or the one in February? I'd like to pose a question to Ms. Davies-Murphy, please.
Sorry, Counselor Wong, can you repeat that?
No, I didn't ask a question yet.
Oh, okay.
That's okay, thank you. My question is, if we postpone this into January or perhaps even February IPC, what's the implication to you?
So the timelines that we referred to when we presented to council in October indicated that we would come today for a February 4th public hearing, and then we need to circulate the plan to the CMRB, and then come back for second and third reading in May, is sort of the plan. And we have a legislative requirement to update the municipal development plan, which is the Calgary Plan, by August 15th. And so that's a timeline that we're sort of planning to. And certainly, a January timeline allows us to keep that February public hearing date intact. I'd need to take a look if, what the implication would be if we went to a February IPC to get to public hearing, and if we can actually make it in time for our August 15th deadline.
And how long would it take to assess that?
We could probably take a look at that today and advise committee.
Sorry, on a point of order, on a point of order.
Yes, go ahead. We're not, yes.
Ms. Davies, you mentioned the legislative requirement. I thought that legislative requirement was, was as per the CMRB's direction, not the MGA. Am I mistaken in that assumption?
The requirement is to align the municipal development plan with the regional growth plan, which is legislated through the MGA. But the direction is from the CMRB, if I'm not mistaken.
Okay, so the MGA, we have a municipal development plan, and it was just updated in 2020 with direction to do it every 10 years. The most recent requirement that I've heard of was through the CMRB, and I didn't realize that we were bound legislatively to their direction as a council.
I may ask Ms. Wilbiser to provide some clarity on that.
Thanks.
Trudy Wilbiser from the Law Department. I agree with the comments that Ms. Davies made. I understand that we have identified a few changes to the existing municipal government development plan that we need to have updated.
And so what I would add is, either way, we need to move forward with the Calgary Plan, or we'll need to bring amendments to the municipal development plan to be aligned with the regional growth.
Is the alternative to opt out of the regional growth?
The legislation for an aligned plan is not contingent on whether or not we participate in the Regional Growth Board.
Well, I thought it was optional for us to be a member, which is going to be determined as of December 31st for the next year. So if we decide not to be a member, then we are no longer bound by the regulations, correct?
Counselor, I would have to say, at this point, we don't know precisely what changes are going to be made by the province. And unless and until they do make changes, we can't determine what changes are going to happen with the requirements that we face. So it's too soon to tell precisely what may happen.
That's correct. So far, the province has only defunded the Calgary Metropolitan Regional Board. There has been no change to the legislation.
Thank you very much.
Sorry, I apologize. The only reason I'm raising it is because what the minister indicated at the time, when he said he was going to defund it, he also stated that, that participation or, or being a member was going to be voluntary. Now, although there's no regulations, per se, that's been drafted, that, to my knowledge, the, whether or not we are part of the CMRB or not, or any other current member indicated that that would be a voluntary participation.
Counselor Chabot, I'm going to interject for a second. I do believe GM Hamilton is on, online as well. Debra, do you want to weigh in?
Yeah, so I'll attempt to help, and I apologize, committee.
No worries.
I'm sick. Counselor Chabot, we're moving forward, as Ms. Davies-Murphy said, we only have the direction that the CMRB is not being funded. At this point in time, we are moving forward status quo until we have different direction from our council. So we are proceeding as, as Ms. Davies-Murphy, sorry, Kath, stated insofar as circulating to CMRB and having to be in compliance with the, the plan, the Calgary Growth Plan by August.
Yeah, my biggest challenge in all of this is that it seems like the tail wagging the dog. It's a Calgary Metropolitan Regional Board, and for us to be given terms relative to that body seems counterintuitive to me.
Okay, thank you. Just a second. I believe, Counselor Wong, were you finished? You are not finished. What is your question? We want to stay on the agenda and this item, not veer onto other discussions. So go ahead.
Yeah, thank you, Chair. The question I'd pose to Ms. Davies-Murphy is as to how long, how long would it take to assess the impact of a January versus February IPC? Only because it makes a difference for a motion that's going to come forward, so.
We would need to take a look at our advertising deadline requirements and just the calendar dates, and we could provide something to you probably within an hour.
Excellent.
Thank you.
So in terms, in terms of that being on the agenda item, then how do we deal with confirming the agenda if we were waiting for that response?
Well, there's going to be a deferral that has to be on the floor, which is not actually on the floor yet. So I need that deferral on the floor before we even talk about dates. So, Counselor Wines, do we have this ready to go?
Yeah, clerk has a copy of it.
I'm sorry, before you start, Counselor Meehan, it's going to be on that, right?
On the deferral, yeah.
Okay, thank you. So I'm going to pause. And Counselor Spencer already wrote that in there. Go ahead, Counselor Wines.
Thanks. Based on even just the conversations now, I do think we should postpone till February IPC meeting for, like, our schedules are crazy, the last-minute changes. I feel, my guess and frustration is we're doing a lot of heavy lifting with some political pressure on administration to do things that are just not thought out. There's not enough capacity or time for administration to do the work that needs to be done, or for council and our communities to digest the changes on this. And we've already done blanket RCG zoning. I think that is a lot of work that needs to go through and will be incorporated into the plan. We're doing too many things at once, and so I would hope that committee would approve deferral to February. Thanks.
Okay, thank you. Counselor Spencer.
Thank you, Chair. So I just, I just want to remind my colleagues that these are not new policy documents. These are two very well-worn, super-important policy documents that we have been, we gave direction to, to look at putting them together in the CTP and the MDP. This is work that's connected to a variety of other city-building initiatives, including our streets. So there's a domino effect here, that you hit one domino, and it's going to tip a whole bunch of others. There was engagement on this going back to October of last year. And when we're talking about two existing policy documents, yes, they got refreshed, they got put together into one document. But there's not, what we're, what we're talking about here in terms of degrees of change and updating, we're talking more about streamlining. We're talking more about making sure that our policy documents talk to each other. We're talking about red tape reduction. We're talking about streamlining our development processes and helping this city respond to the changes and the growth pressures it's facing right now. So I find this all rather interesting. On the CMRB, that's a speed bump, folks. The CMRB stuff is, all the meetings are continuing to happen. The regional partners are continuing to talk. Major commitments for the JPA work was just made. We've had lots of conversations about, we just yesterday had a massive conversation about an economic development play between two, you know, players within the CMRB. So, so folks, I'm just not buying this. And comments that this is not thought out is a little bit silly. This is very well thought out. It has an awful lot in it. Is it perfect? Nothing we pass here is perfect. And this is, we are right now in the middle of the process of, of helping it get to where it needs to go. The fact that we're doing this before we've asked the questions and pointed out pieces that we think need us to do this points to me for some other motivations that I think are kind of rather silly. So I'd encourage you not to delay this, that we have our conversation, that we do the work that we are hired to do, to pinpoint the things that we think need to be changed and updated and improved, so that work can happen this side for, so that we don't endlessly delay what is already, many people would say, been delayed work to this point anyway. So, yeah, I'd encourage my colleagues not to delay this.
Thank you. Counselor Spencer, Counselor Meehan, go ahead.
Yeah, so I just want to speak to the amendments that have been put forward or the insinuation that a lot has changed. The ones that we got from Laura this morning are largely like clerical edits. And then the, the, the part that changed is Chapter 1, and whether Chapter 1 is going to be an amendment, or it's going to be part of the statutory document, which is a big part of the conversation that I think will happen, almost irrespective of when and how much time we have. And so nothing's really changing, but we're discussing the location of where something should live, which I think would have to be decided by this body. And so that's why there's amendments there from certain members of council who think that it should live somewhere differently. I think it's a big mistake to not take the time to at least discuss it today, because I think when we eventually do come back, there's going to still be probably a desire to then refer it back for more work based on the conversations of the community. So I just would love if we could at least, like, get partway down that road. And the reason I say that is, early in the new year, we have the Riley LAP coming back. We have two new LAPs. There's a lot coming. And so it's okay to not be ready to pass this. It's totally fine. But, but I think we should at least have the conversation so we can help administration move down the line on some of the edits that you probably will have. And so let's, let's take advantage of the time. We're not going to have more time just given to us in the new year. And I'm not saying you have to pass it today. Like, let's just have more discussions and answer questions that we have. That's it.
Thank you. Before I go to Counselor Wong, I'm going to ask Ms. Davies-Murphy to come back up with dates, please. So maybe it helps with the debate.
Sure, thank you. So looking at the calendar for next year, the February IPC meeting is on February 12th. That takes us to an April public hearing. And then, simply because we have to advertise, and then moving through the CMRB circulation that's currently required, we're expecting that to take two to three months. So that would bring us back in likely late July for second and third reading. So it is possible. It is certainly tight. And as Counselor Spencer indicated, the uncertainty around the CMRB timelines is a concern for, for me. Thank you.
I appreciate that context. Go back to the queue, Counselor Wong.
Thank you. Just wanted to jump in a bit of rebuttal, I guess, to Counselor Spencer. I think we all appreciate what's in the MDP and the CTP. We also appreciate the carryforward of a lot of material that's there into the Calgary Plan. You know, and I think the considerations of all the dominos, like, we all understand it as well. But we have sought to recognize that the Calgary Plan is going to be a statutory document guiding the city for 30 years, and we don't want to put a hiccup to, you know, be overlooked and, you know, make mistakes going forward. Certainly on the side of the equation in terms of public engagement, you know, the public deserve a right to, to be properly informed as well. And I trust the administration, during the creation of the document, engaging 21,000 people was a good, was a good take. But now the final document's in place, and having that in front of communities and constituents across the entire city is just as important. Have, you know, again, due process. So let's not overlook the fact that we serve our constituents.
Okay, thanks. Counselor Chabot.
Yep, thank you. I'm, I'm of the similar mind as, as Counselor Wong. While I appreciate that some members of council may be very familiar with the document and all the implications of it, I still haven't completely wrapped my head around the 2020 amendments that were made to the MDP, let alone, you know, fully grasping the, the connection and the, the, I guess, the retention of continuity between documents, between the amendment that was made to the MDP and CTP in 2020, and how that all got incorporated into this new document. So whilst I appreciate that some members of council may feel very comfortable with this current document, I for one am not, nor have I had a chance to engage my community myself to get their feedback. While administration has stated that they've reached out to communities, no one that I've spoken to within my community associations is even familiar with this document, let alone the fact that it's coming now with a final draft. So, well, I don't dispute that there's a lot of people that were engaged in the communities. That's not necessarily directly tied into the community associations, which have, which have standing in the MGA. So I for one would like the opportunity to engage my community associations and their members, engage their input on this thing, to provide them an opportunity to provide me with some feedback before I'm prepared to move forward on voting on this. So I'm going to support the amendment, although I would be, I would have been satisfied even with January, because I think I may be able to engage my folks even over the Christmas holidays. But February gives me additional time to engage with them, so I will support the proposed amendment.
Okay, thank you very much. Mayor Gondak.
Thanks, Chair. Sorry, I can't be there in person. I'm just between meetings. One of the things that I hope we can consider is getting this project daylighted at the very least. My concern is if we defer it right now to February, it's out of sight and out of mind. If we actually have a discussion about what's before us today, if the result after that discussion is to defer it, to give people more time to consult with their community associations and their residents, I don't have a big issue with that. But I really feel like we need to at least get this onto people's radar. And so that would be my concern with doing an immediate deferral at the moment. We talk a lot about making sure that we're bringing the public with us along the journey, especially when it's a change like this one. I think it's really important for the public to hear the debate that we're going to have at committee to understand how we wish to move forward. And like I said, it may be the decision of committee to not advance this to a decision point, but I think we owe it to people to at least show them what this is today and talk to them about how it's going to impact them, and set you up for success as members of council going out into your wards to have that engagement with community associations and with residents, saying that this is what's before us. I just worry that we'll fall into that same trap of not sharing enough with the public before we go out and talk to them, if we don't at least get things started today. Thanks.
Okay, thank you. I will offer some, just a debate here before Counselor Wines closes. There's a couple of things that I'm, I'm actually like not happy with any of this, to be honest, because next year is full of a lot of items that need to get brought forward. Would say that if this doesn't pass, and we still have the will to share more with our committee, we're going to have to make changes to the recommendation, that it doesn't go to council, and maybe we have more conversations with our community associations. Would say that there are members of the industry that also wanted some more time. So I'm going to think about which direction I think this should go at this point. But I am not that pleased with any of this, how it all turned out this morning. So Ms. Wines or Counselor Wines, you have to wait till Counselor Walcott debates, and then we can move over to your close. Counselor Walcott, are you debating?
Ooh, apologies. No, I just, I just got in.
That's okay. Counselor Wines, can you close? Thanks.
Thanks. We have 28 amendments that came in around 9 o'clock last night. To, to the mayor's point, one, why are you jumping on during committee? It shows the political pressure to pass this fast. We tried, we were never clear on our communication from day one. We were running comms with community at the same time we were running community consultation with RCG. And that has been brought up many times with administration, and they did not hear it. So I think the best course of action is committee to defer this so that we can catch up on what glossary changes were made, what definitions and readjustments were made. This shows this is being rushed by the nature of a 9 o'clock email yesterday. So please defer this so that council can do the work that we are elected to do. Thank you.
Question of privilege, Chair?
Yep.
I was mentioned in the close as to the fact that I have joined this meeting because of political pressure. That is completely false. I have the right, as does any other elected member of council, to attend committee meetings. Chair, you and I have talked about whether I would try to be at this one, given the magnitude of the items on it. I have attended other committee meetings. I find it incredibly disrespectful to say that I- I find it incredibly disrespectful to say that I should somehow not be able to engage in a committee meeting. I just wanted to state that for the record.
Thank you. Appreciate that. Counselor Wines, closed. Kate, over to you.
I'm having technical issues, Chair, so I'm voting verbally in favor of the recommendation.
We have that noted, Counselor. Thank you. Counselor Walcott, your vote on the postponement?
No.
No, thank you. Chair, call the votes in.
Kate, can we display results, please? That's carried six to four with Counselor Meehan, Spencer Walcott, and Mayor Gondek voting against. So that means item 7.3 has been moved to the, correct me, Clerks, February 12th, Infrastructure and Planning Committee.
That's correct, yeah.
I would suggest administration, we have to work on dates and Counselor Meehan and I will be working on the next two agendas together. With that, we're moving over to the, well, sorry, no, we're not, actually. We're still on the agenda. So Clerks, just walk me through. We're putting up the agenda as amended at this point. Can I get a mover for this? Counselor Demong?
We did have Meehan, Counselor Meehan is the original mover?
Oh, sorry, Counselor Meehan was the original mover. My bad. So Counselor Meehan, are we doing, anyone else have any changes to today's agenda? Now would be the time.
Can I move to put Calgary Plan, no, I'm just kidding, back on the agenda? No, that's it.
What I'll say is now you're definitely not taking until five o'clock to finish today's agenda. Anyone opposed to the agenda as amended? Hearing and seeing none, that is carried. I will look for a mover to the minutes from last meeting. Counselor?
Chair, before you do, I sent a note to Clerks and I'm not sure if it went through or not. It's in relations to the minutes from the last meeting where there was two sets of minutes that were moved together, which was dated October 16th and October 22nd. And a question whether or not those dates are correct, I'm not sure if Clerks had had a chance to look at that.
Yes, Counselor Chabot, we did email you back. So that, that October 22nd IPC meeting, that was the IPC meeting that took place following the organizational meeting of council, and that was just to elect a chair and vice chair.
Okay, my apologies, my email's not working. Thank you for, for that.
Kate, so Counselor Chabot, would you like to move the minutes then?
Yeah, no, happy to move them.
Okay, all right. Anyone opposed to the minutes from the November 6th Infrastructure and Planning Committee? Hearing and seeing none, that is carried. So we will go to the first item of today's agenda, which is 7.1, Calgary Planning Commission Governance Review and Bylaw Amendments, Phase 2. And I'm not sure who's presenting. Oh, please come on up to the podium. Thanks.
Good morning, Chair and members of council. I'm Jen Maximatis White, Senior Planner with the Planning Advisory and Coordination Team. Joining me today is Acting Manager Steve Jones, and will be presenting Phase 2 of the Calgary Planning Commission Governance Review. Next slide, please. The recommendations before committee are to forward this report to the January 14th Public Hearing Meeting of Council and to recommend that council give three readings to a new Calgary Planning Commission bylaw, a new development authority and subdivision authority bylaw, and give three readings to the proposed amendments to the land use bylaw. Next page, please. Work begin on this project in 2023. An external consultant was hired to support a governance review of Calgary Planning Commission. Phase 1 of the recommendations were approved by a council at the July 30th meeting, and those recommendations were largely, largely centered around membership and included removing members of council from CPC, removing the mayor as an ex officio member, and adding four more positions for public members. In addition, new commissioners will now begin their terms in January rather than October. Next slide, please. We're now moving forward with our Phase 2 recommendations, which is centered around strengthening processes, ensuring CPC is adding value in the decision-making process, and improving the workload and workflow of commission. To support this, we have developed a new Calgary Planning Commission bylaw, including a new purpose statement, as well as updates to the workload of CPC to ensure that time is spent where their technical expertise is of most benefit. Next slide, please. To accommodate changes to applications forwarded to CPC, three bylaws are impacted. First, as mentioned, we are proposing a new CPC bylaw. The new language allow, allows some flexibility on the files forwarded to CPC for review and recommendation. This will allow for the creation of a stream of land use of applications that bypass CPC and go directly to council for decision, including those land use amendment files that approved with council-approved policies such as the childcare guidelines, street and community naming applications, as well as applications for redesignation to low-density residential districts. Second, a new development authority and subdivision authority bylaw is proposed. All subdivision powers have been embedded in the CPC bylaw, and we are proposing a new bylaw to include approving authority powers in one location. Finally, an amendment to the land use bylaw is proposed. A language changes proposed to Section 17, which would allow administration to forward a land use amendment application to CPC or directly to council for decision. These changes will remove a step in the land use application process for select applications, increasing efficiencies, and will assist in bringing additional housing and other businesses and services to market faster. Next slide, please. Additional improvements in this phase, but not requiring bylaw updates, including having, include having administration assist in summarizing CPC's recommendations, reasons for recommendation, rather, which will address workload concerns of CPC, will also be completing a governance manual to assist commissioners in their work and ensure that the roles, responsibilities, and procedures are clear to all parties that interact with CPC. Next slide, please. Following implementation of this work, we expect that there will be a greater variety of skills and perspectives present at CPC, that all involved in Planning Commission will have a clear understanding of their roles and responsibilities, and that there will be improved efficiencies across a variety of application types. Next slide, please. To conclude, our recommendation for committee today is on the screen, and we're happy to answer any questions. Thank you.
Thank you very much. I'm just going to double check, see if there's any speakers to this item. We do have one. Dave Rett? Did I say that right?
I'm going to be brief about this one. Not, don't have a lot of knowledge about it, but from what I can read it, this is just a continuation of the blanket rezoning. You're trying to, again, limit the ability of people to come to presentation, do things. In my opinion, this should be deferred till after the next election because I think we have to have a real reset like this. You're just making it really hard for people to have any kind of an input from what goes on in their community. And that's all I'm going to say. Thank you.
Would you like me to add a, just a point of clarification on this, on this item in particular?
Yes.
This one is for our planning, like our, like our commission planning. What we've done is there's two steps to this. We've removed elected officials starting in the new year, and these are just bylaw changes. I don't believe members of the public could ever speak to Planning Commission. This is a technical review. So I appreciate you voicing your concerns on other things, but infrastructure planning is always going to be open to the public to speak to items. This particular one is only changes to the proposed bylaw that came from administration on how we needed to, I would suggest, remove elected officials from Calgary Planning Commission. That should not hinder in any which way of public speaking to land use items that are up in front of public hearing or coming to Infrastructure Planning Committee. So I hope that helps a little bit.
Yeah, I know that's true, but I mean, just not in this particular issue, but in general with council, from what I see is, you got an administration that does not want to take input from council.
Okay, well, thank you for, I know you're here for the next item.
My opinion, thank you, thank you for that.
Yeah, you're here for the next item, so we'll look forward to hearing you to speak to that one.
Thank you.
I'll just do one more call out. Is there anyone else here to speak to item 7.1? Okay, hearing and seeing none. We will move into questions of administration. Counselor Wong, go for it.
Thank you, Chair. Ms. Maximatis White, thank you for presenting the report. Two things I was going to ask, one of which was it made references of a list of items that would be going to, I'm sorry, listed development permits that will go to CPC. And I'm not sure if I saw in the report what the expanded list or what the complete list of items that will go to CPC. Can you expand on that?
Yeah, absolutely. We do have a, a current list that, that sits with administration and that administration has been responsible on what those, those development permits that are forwarded to CPC decision are. We are working on those amendments to that list, should this be successful in, in front of the public hearing in, in January. An example of an item we're looking at, which impacts your ward, is right now all applications, all development permit applications that implement density bonusing go to CPC for decision. We're recommending some changes there that only those applications that have an urban design improvement, so if it was just a cash contribution, those don't typically generate a lot of discussion, that those would, those would no longer be forwarded to CPC for decision. So really focusing on those larger development permit applications that have a bigger impact.
Okay. And then, thank you for, pardon me. Thank you for highlighting the, those in, in our area. And the reason I bring that up is the referral motion that's coming forward, Riley LAP talks about some increased densification around TOD areas and to the point that, you know, additional height's going to be imposed in areas which are, you know, currently one-story, two-story type situations. The, those types of development permits are, are going to be challenging to the public, no, no doubt, because again, they've been accustomed to a very, you know, how to say, and I'm talking specifically to council today, I can appreciate that. They're very concerned about the, the scale of development in there and what a new scale, new height would look like. So I guess, again, I'm not sure if you've got that list or you say in January, the list that those types of development permits will come forward. So will that list of types come to us in January as an information or how is that going to be received?
We're not anticipating having that before council. It, it has been something that, like I said, has been something that administration has been responsible for and is, is publicly available on, on the CPC website. I, what I would say is that i- in general, those applications that increase the intensity to an extent outside of a statutory policy, for example, those would still be forwarded with the development permit process to CPC, and that administration always has, has the ability when applications come in to, we do have that flexibility to request that CPC be the, the development authority on those applications.
Okay. The second part of that equation is also related to residential development permits, particularly the, the RCG HGO ones. And when we talk about, you know, the, the, I forgot the term, but blanket rezoning, I was going to try and refer to the term we used back in the springtime. But when we talk about that, we usually say RCGs on the standard 50 by 100 foot lot, you know, four units above, four units below, typical of that. What we're seeing now is a lot assemblies, people consolidating lots, to the point that you're having, you know, row housing that is, that is, you know, like in the case we dealt with public hearing the other day, you know, 18 units above, 18 units below in a residential area. In those situations where those types of development permits are coming in, which is different than the, the street, you know, the streetscape deformed in that area, what those development permits come through for to CPC simply because it is entirely different than what is in the area.
So historically, we haven't had lower density development permits forwarded to, to CPC for decision. We are looking at an option for, for the future for DPs that if greater than 40% of a block face was going to be impacted by, by a proposed development, that, that we could look at forwarding that development permit to CPC for decision, so when we have a, a significant change on a block.
Right, okay. So I guess the question to the community, because again, I said this the other day, yesterday I think it was, I spent the, the evening in Mount Pleasant the other night talking about exactly that, that type of development, and people were saying, I want to come back, I want the council, I want this council to overturn that. I said, well, I hate to say this, we passed RCG, we don't have a land use, it's in development permit stage, you have to go through the development permit process, and they feel a bit stymied by this, but simply because they don't know how to comment on this type of assembly, right? So I guess my, my point is, when we talk about DPs coming to Planning Commission, I really think we need to take a look at where there's a lot assemblies and putting in a real significant types of development, so we make sure that, you know, again, from a, from a technical perspective, we're not, we're not overlooking something, at least until we get through a, a pilot phase where we can understand how this is done. And most of the concerns people have is, is, you know, the, you talk about site coverage, but it's also about the garage and laneway access and waste recycling and everything else that goes with that. Those are significant concerns of our community.
Counselor Wong, was there a question in there? Sorry.
Yeah, so my, my question was, thank you, thank.
Okay.
My question is, you know, can you advise when we could bring that back as a consideration for?
We can have more information for, for council in January. I would just clarify that where we do have those applications, if they're HGO, for example, they may be permitted. So if, if they are permitted and following on the rules, then they wouldn't go to CPC for decision because we are, we, we have to approve those applications.
Okay. So I have two other lines of questions, one of which is in the Planning Commission, the focus is a technical review, correct?
Correct.
So technical review based on land use bylaws, technical review based on, on building codes and everything else such, right?
It is a technical review, but building code is outside of the TP. Yeah.
Okay. So the, the question I have is, when we talk about these types of development as it relates to the fabric of a community, the character of a community, you know, the ambience, the amenities in the area, is that, is that a function of CPC to take a look at that stuff?
Like you said, CPC is, is that technical review body, so those technical aspects of that, that land use application, certainly they're, they're considering context and all those other technical requirements of, of an application.
Okay. So where, the reason I'm asking that question is, and I know we're not dealing with the agenda item until February now, but in the Calgary Plan?
No, no. We're, we're not going down the road right now. So just this, just this bylaw, we can't go down the Calgary Plan questions.
Fair enough. My, 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 my point again is, is a consideration of strengthening the review by CPC about community character, community fabric, and, and is that something that we see in these amendments?
What I would say is when we did the first phase of, of this work around the membership, we did broaden the skills and experience in the, in the role description of a, of a commissioner to, to put more of an emphasis on that, that community experience. So, so we're certainly addressing it that way.
Okay. My last line of question is, is being a technical review and, and use outline in fact, you know, adding public members on there brings a community perspective. How do we guard against political opinions expressed in CPC? And, and I say that in the first couple of years there in council, I served on CPC, and many times over, I challenged other commission members, don't go there, that's, that's a role of council. How do we ensure that, that, you know, the rules are defined in here that it's purely technical?
So one second, I'm going to let GM Hamilton weigh in.
Thank you, Chair Sharp. Counselor Wong, I, I don't think that's a fair question for Ms. Maximatis White to answer. And really, the, the terms of, of reference for Calgary Planning Commission are clear. We, by removing counselors in the la, in the first phase of the CPC review, we've actually removed that political nature that can creep into CPC sometimes and are emphasizing the technical review merits of CPC. And Ms. Maximatis White spoke to increasing the different skillsets that we're looking for. So those, those changes are gearing us back towards what CPC should be.
Good to hear. Thank you. Close then.
Okay, well, we're just asking questions and men's, we're not even debating yet. So, okay. Counselor Chabot, you're in here to debate. Would you like to move?
Well, I have some questions first.
Go ahead.
As well.
Okay.
Thanks, Ms. Ms. Maximatis White. Well, thanks, first of all, for bringing forward recommendations to try and improve the efficiency of CPC. One of the recommendations in there is looking at a scribe. And so that's one of the challenges that I had with CPC in the past, is that I heard a lot of debate around the room as far as rationale, but it wasn't always incorporated into the recommendations that came to council. It was typically at the will of individual members to provide that actual input. I, I like the idea, I'm just, I'm, I'm always cautious about soliciting the input of a, a third party to, I guess, co, you know, kind of put all those thoughts together. So can you help me to understand a little bit what the objective is here on the scribe as far as reporting to council?
Yeah, absolutely. So, so we're looking at that, that summarization of, of commissions' reasons for recommendation to, to come from, from one member of administration. They would summarize those comments, provide them to CPC, prior to them, to providing them to council, to make sure that this is an accurate description of those comments that, that were heard in the meeting, and then provide that to council for their deliberations on those matters before them.
Okay, as is typical for me, when it comes to things like this, I prefer to see an and rather than an or. Would there still be an opportunity for individual members to provide their own individual? Would there still be an opportunity for individual members to provide their own individual submission to be included in council's package?
Absolutely. That would still be available to commissioners.
Okay. Good. Yeah, I know, honestly, Ms. Ms. Maximatis White, I, I'd certainly liked the opportunity to further engage with you on the implications of some of these recommendations offline. I'm not going to go down that road today. There's a few things on there that I would like to explore further with you before it gets to council. Happy to move the recommendations today to move it forward to council, but like I said, I'd really like the opportunity to engage with you further on this matter to better understand some of the implications of those changes. So happy to move it.
All right. Happy to move, you've moved this. You, any more debate on this item? Counselor Chabot, would you like to close?
Closed.
Excellent. Iscribed to vote.
Counselor Chabot, your vote, please.
Yes.
Thank you. Chair, all the votes ready?
Let me display the results, please. And that is carried unanimously. All right, we're moving to the next item, which is 7.2, and it's the Bear Spa Fidermain, South Fidermain Pipe Investigation Findings. And I think there's going to be a switcheroo of folks, so we'll give them some time to get situated. Would you like to sit? If the presentation is going to be a bit lengthy, you're more than welcome to come sit.
I appreciate that. I'm, I'm okay standing. That's great. Thanks.
Let's try and, just want to be nice.
Of course, of course.
Christmas, like in my Christmas greetings. Mr. Bouchard, would you mind coming to the podium, please? Committee, this is Francois Bouchard's last committee meeting with us, and he will be coming to council next week as his last council meeting. So just want to say, on behalf of Infrastructure Planning Committee and council, thank you for all the hard work. And I'm sure everyone will love to give you, you know, their information and just keep in touch, but if, can we give everyone, can we give him a round of applause for all the work he's done over the years?
Thank you.
You're very welcome. So thank you very much, and now we can proceed with the presentation.
Thank you very much, Chair. So by way of introduction, today's report is a highly technical final report on the investigation into the failure of the Bear Spa South Fidermain. It aligns with our commitment to keep council and the public informed on this project. And with today's report and our announcement around Dr. Bouchard, I would like to introduce Steve Whiten, our manager of asset management. He'll be taking over the lead role on this work from Dr. Bouchard. Mr. Whiten has been with the city for over 30 years and is a well-respected leader in the asset management profession. So with that, I will turn the presentation over to Mr. Whiten.
Great. Thank you very much. Thank you, GM Vanderputten, and good morning, everyone. I'm here as, as GM Vanderputten presented to talk to you this morning about the results of the Bear Spa South Fidermain Pipe Investigation Findings. Next slide, please. The purpose of today's discussion is to provide you an update, as I said, about the final detailed results of the pipe investigation findings from Associated Engineering. And as well, too, is to provide you a better understanding regarding the process for prioritizing our asset condition assessments and how we manage risk. And as GM Vanderputten did mention, please be forewarned, this is a highly technical presentation. I will provide, or attempt to provide explanation and definitions as we go along through the conversation, but if you do wish additional detail regarding any of the content, please, we would be more than pleased to answer your questions after the presentation. Next slide, please. This slide is a reminder of recent conversations we've had with committee and council, and that, as planned, we are here today to discuss the results of the pipe investigation findings, and that we will be returning to council on December the 17th. Next slide, please. Our recommendations is that the Infrastructure and Planning Committee recommend that council receive this report for the corporate record, and as well, too, that the Infrastructure and Planning Committee forward this report to the 2024 December 17th regular meeting of council. Next slide, please. In keeping with the purpose of today's discussion, I'd like to dive in a little deeper to discuss the results of the pipe investigation. Next slide, please. First, I would like to recognize and provide sincere thanks to our partner and trusted advisor, Associated Engineering, in supporting our team since the onset of the Fidermain break. Today, we are joined by Duane Strayer and Russ Dewick from Associated Engineering, and both of them are available to address any questions or comments specific to the pipe investigation findings within the associated report. Next slide, please. On June the 5th, 2024, the Bear Spa South Fidermain suffered a catastrophic failure. This Fidermain is the most important within the city of Calgary's potable water transmission network, consisting of a 1950 millimeter and 1500 millimeter diameter pipe, both of which constructed in 1975. Immediately following the rupture, the city has requested Associated Engineering to undertake an investigation of the failed pipe and to present information gained during the exposure of additional pipes, also known as the quote "five hotspots," following the initial failure. The cause of the June 5th failure was identified as breakage of a sufficient number of prestressed wires in a pipe segment causing a loss of pressure resisting capability of that pipe. Based on information available to date, we believe that the ruptured pipe experienced microcracking or previous mortar damage, allowing soil interaction with the prestressed wires. Microcracks are very small cracks within the mortar that are invisible to the naked eye, but yet still allow external environment to become in contact with those wire wraps. The compromised mortar allowed stress corrosion cracking and/or hydrogen embrittlement of the prestressed wires resulting in brittle wire failures and fractures. The lack of chloride penetration and simultaneous corrosion cracking, or corrosion, pardon me, occurring on some of the pipes suggests that microcracking of the cement mortar coating may have occurred. Next slide, please. First off, I'd like to start with the factors believed not to have contributed to the failure. There is no information indicating that the manufacturing standards applicable in 1975 were not followed. Standards have evolved since, and some of those changes may have extended the life of the pipe if they were in place in 1975. Live loading subsequent to the construction in 1975 is not believed to be a contributing factor. Strike current induced corrosion does not appear to be present. The pump operations immediately before the event of the Bear Spa Water Treatment Plant and the secondary pump stations connected to the Bear Spa South Fidermain did not create an over or under situation that contributed to the failure. And lastly, a transient pressure event did not occur immediately before the rupture. Next slide, please. The investigation report yielded the following observations relative to the ruptured and distressed portions of pipe. Some of the pipe showed visible mortar cracking and delamination upon its investigation, or sorry, pardon me, excavation, while other pipe had intact mortar. Laboratory testing confirmed that some of the distressed pipes div have chlorides that penetrated the mortar, while other pipe showed no evidence of chloride penetration. Soil testing along the Fidermain showed significantly aggressive soils in certain areas, predominantly due to high chloride concentrations. Additionally, severe pitting and corrosion of the prestressed wires was present, as well as significant quantities of brittle white fail, brittle, brittle wire fail, failure, pardon me. As well, there is evidence of hydrogen embrittlement and stress corrosion cracking appearing to be due to chloride penetration of the mortar and/or microcracking. And to provide you with some definition, hydrogen embrittlement is the phenomenon where metals become brittle due to the absorption and diffusion of hydrogen in the material. This can lead to cracking and failure of the metal structure. And as well, stress corrosion cracking is a growth of crack formation in a corrosive environment, and it could lead to unexpected and sudden failure of the metal structure. Next slide, please. Soil samples obtained by Thurber Engineering were gathered at the five additional repair sites. That information, along with soil samples obtained by the city subcontractors both in 2014 and in 2024, is illustrated on this slide. You can see that there are locations with low, moderate, and high levels of chlorides along the entire length of the Fidermain, and it is noteworthy that none of these samples showed any sign of aggressive sulfate soils, which is significant to know, because it has been expected that Calgary has sulfates in their soil conditions. As Dr. Bouchard has previously pointed out, the city soil testing program tends to focus on sulfates, which we will discuss later in this presentation. Any steel exposed to soils with high chlorides would be subject to accelerated corrosion and failure rates, and comparing the wire break data to the chloride data along the Fidermain, there is a strong correlation between the level of distress, the level of chlorides, and soil resistivity. With this said, there are some locations with moderate to severe distressed pipes in areas with relatively low chloride and low sulfate levels. There are also areas with high levels of chlorides that do not correlate with severe areas of pipe distress. Additionally, there are multiple locations where 2014 soil samples showed low chlorides, and then the 2024 samples from the same location showed significant chloride levels. I would like to stress that this dramatic shift in soil chemistry between 2014 and 2024 will require further investigation as to the cause. Lastly, it was identified that road deicing activities using sodium chloride is highly likely to have contributed to the elevated chloride concentrations found in the samples. Again, I would like to stress that the engineering community recognizes the impacts of road salts and deicing activities on physical infrastructure, including bridges, pavements, and sidewalks. The relationship between road salts and Calgary's Fidermain network requires further study. Next slide, please. Pure Technologies obtained samples from the prestressed wires and steel cylinder of the ruptured and exhumed pipes. For analysis, in summary, the lab analysis revealed the following information. Firstly, the steel cylinder and wires met the pipe standard requirements for strength at the time of manufacturing. The prestressed wires exhibited poor torsional ductility, however, this is not a requirement of the pipe standards at the time. Some of the wires sent for analysis had longitudinal splits, consistent with wires drawn at high temperatures. The wire in the failed pipe had hydrogen embrittlement sensitivity, and some of the pipes in the five hotspots had hydrogen, hydrogen embrittlement sensitivity while others did not. Next slide, please. This slide shows a graph of flow and pressure prior, prior to the original break and is intended to demonstrate the type of information that was used to complete a detailed pump operations and pressure analysis. A similar analysis was completed for stray current and live loads. To reiterate my previous comments, the results of these analyses show that stray current, pump operations, and live loads were not considered factors that contributed to the original break. The team and I can provide further explanation of this information at the conclusion of this presentation, if needed. Next slide, please. Similar to the previous slide, this slide is intended to demonstrate that a detailed structural analysis of the 1950 millimeter pipe was undertaken by Pure Technologies. This is a pipe performance curve and is used, is completed through finite element analysis, and it's used to determine when a pipe will reach various pressure limits. The resulting analysis showed that the operating pressure for the Fidermain was well within the pipe's limits. Next slide, please. As well, the city has completed electromagnetic inspections of the Fidermain using the pipe robot and the pipe diver. These inspections revealed a total of 239 deteriorated pipes in addition to the pipe that ruptured. To put this in context, there are over 2,000 pipe segments within the Fidermain. So in other words, the majority of the pipe segments are in good condition. You may also recall that Dr. Bouchard talked about the fact that we've made 29 repairs to pipe segments over the past six months. As shown in the chart, these actions have resulted in a repair of segments of pipe that had the most significant structural deficiencies. All of these repairs have resulted in the Fidermain now being operated with very few recent wire breaks, and the pipe is now stabilized. It is important to recognize that the Fidermain still does have segments of pipe that do have minor to moderate structural deterioration. So while some segments are considered in good condition and others are fair to poor, the pipe is overall in a fair condition. With these comments made, I do need to provide some context, specifically around the criteria that administration has used to make the data-driven decisions regarding the pipe monitoring, repair, and emergency replacement that, and how we use those, that information to treat those poor-conditioned pipe segments going forward. The chart on the bottom of the slide, as provided to administration by Associated Engineering, has guided all of our necessary actions for the past six months and will continue to do so into the future. The pipe segments that are in poor condition are those pipes that have 30 wire breaks. And as you can see in the chart, the recommended action is that we monitor the pipe's performance and make repairs as soon as practical. I do want to point out that practical does not mean that we need to take action tomorrow, nor next month, nor next year. You may also recall that Dr. Bouchard mentioned that Pure Technologies has also undertaken a structural statistical analysis of the pipe, and it showed that we would most likely experience one of those 30 wire break segments needing to be repaired or replaced around 2030. Back to the point, we consider that practical could be in the order of five years from now, and the timing of making such a repair would need to be balanced against other potential service disruption and an impact to CalGarians. As well, the acoustic fiber optic monitoring system was installed along this portion of the Fidermain so that we have continuous, real-time, and precise monitoring of wire breaks and their locations, so we can accurately track the structural performance of the entire Fidermain, especially those pieces of pipe in poor condition, providing us time to plan and complete a safe repair and proactive repair or replacement of pipe using the spare parts and the designs that we already have on hand now. Next slide, please. I'd also like to provide some information regarding the processes and criterion that we use to prioritize our assets for condition assessment, as some may wonder why we didn't know about the Fidermain sooner. Next slide, please. To provide a larger context, municipalities around the world, including the city of Calgary, have a gap between the funding needed to support the desired levels of service and allocated budget. The city of Calgary has adopted asset management and risk management processes as far back as the early 2000s to help to manage these scarce resources and to prioritize our lifecycle activities, including our condition assessments. Related to this point, and again, as Dr. Bouchard has already pointed out, you don't just go and inspect a pipe tomorrow, especially the Bear Spa South Fidermain. There is an immense amount of work that goes into planning and preparing for inspection of a critical Fidermain, especially one like the Bear Spa South Fidermain, that doesn't have redundancy. And more so, a concrete pipe that was built in 1975 and not designed to allow for the insertion and extraction of a technology that would allow for its condition assessment. We've been asked why we don't just dig up the pipe and take a look at it. The previous results that I've shared outlined that the mortar of the original break had little or no signs of cracking or chloride penetration. So it is possible that you would not see any visual indicators of wire breaks from the inside or from the outside. More so, if you exhume a pipe and remove the dirt that acts as part of the overall structure that stabilizes the pipe, you run the risk of further structural compromise. In the case of the Bear Spa Fidermain, preparation was already well underway for the condition assessment. This included the required 12 months of planning and design work and two seasons of low demand in order to execute the required work to prepare for an assessment. This does not include the time that was required to rectify any issues or major repairs that were encountered during that were encountered during testing. Next slide, please. The slide that you're seeing here shows a simplified risk model that is indicative of the type of analysis that is completed to prioritize an asset condition assessment. The Water Utilities Asset Management Program uses data-driven decision-making processes that are based on recognized risk management practices. These processes allow our asset lifecycle activities, including feeder main condition assessments, to be prioritized. These processes, the decision-making criteria, and the priorities are reviewed every few years and are based on experience stemming from previous feeder main breaks, as well as Calgary-specific soil conditions, pipe material and vintage, cost consequence, feeder main functionality, and pipe performance information from our third-party experts. As a brief aside, it is important to remember, again, the fact that Dr. Bouchard has previously discussed that the feeder main network is made up of over 470 kilometers of pipe. The sheer size of the network is the reason why we need to set priorities on what feeder mains to inspect and what frequency. As I've already mentioned in the previous slide, the inspection of a feeder main takes significant time and effort to plan and prepare for, and what we need to do is balance asset condition assessments with the timing and impact of the service disruptions to Calgarians. With this said, the city is constantly exploring new technologies and new methods to improve our inspection capabilities. So back to the chart. The risk assessment showed that we didn't have any feeder mains in quadrant number one. Those assets are high impact and high probability of failure. There were a few feeder mains that were identified in quadrant number two. These assets have a low impact of failure and a high probability of failure. So in other words, these assets were either experiencing breaks, sometimes frequently, or were highly likely to have breaks. The low consequence of failure doesn't make these assets any less critical to the supply of drinking water, and thus, after a comprehensive risk analysis, the business decision was made in 2015 to focus on condition assessments, repairs, and replacements of feeder mains in this quadrant. Now moving to quadrant three. These assets have a high impact of failure and a low probability of failure. For example, these assets may serve a large number of people, they may have a higher flow rate, or they possibly have little to no redundancy. The Berespa South feeder main was in this quadrant. Lastly, but not least, is quadrant four. There are a number of feeder mains in this quadrant, and there have been condition assessments completed when opportunities presented themselves. These feeder mains, again, still critical to water supply, are the lowest risk and are monitored as such. So, following the priorities set by the risk assessment, the city completed feeder main condition assessments, starting with those in quadrant number two, and then quadrant three, and then quadrant four. The business decision that led to the prioritization is not wrong, and is based on the best information that administration had at the time. Back to my previous point, administration had also updated the water feeder main criticality and assessment in 2021, and the Berespa South feeder main was confirmed as the next priority for inspection. Next slide, please. At the risk of severely understating, this is a significant learning opportunity for the city of Calgary's utility asset management program, and the fact that we are committed to do things differently. As I've already mentioned, our asset management practices have previously focused to mitigate the effects of high sulfate soils. Given the experience gained from the McKnight feeder main break, the significance of chlorides will be accommodated for in our risk modeling and soil sampling programs. As well, administration also recognizes that our past risk assessment and prioritization approaches were biased towards the mitigation of the likelihood of failure. In the case of the Berespa feeder main, the likelihood of failure was extremely low when compared to other feeder mains within the network. This emergency has shown the need for our risk and asset management practices to put a larger emphasis on the consequence of failure, given the obvious severity of the break that occurred this past summer. Additionally, we also need to undertake further study to confirm the root causes related to the observed increases of chlorides in the soil. And lastly, we are committed to review our design specifications and guidelines to further mitigate risk, including the provision of pipe protection methods and monitoring technologies. Next slide, please. As to next steps, next slide, please. As we continue our work on the feeder main, here's an overview of the next steps and plans to report back into 2025. Note that these timelines may adjust slightly, and we will provide updates as we make progress. In February of 2025, we will be returning with a report that includes more information on the redundancy of the Berespa South feeder main and the progress made on the north and south water servicing options. Additionally, in March of 2025, we will be reporting back on the response findings from the incident itself. In Q2, we will bring forward an implementation plan for the feeder main to enhance our redundancy, and we will continue to bring updates on the implementation plan throughout the remainder of the year. Again, thank you very much for the opportunity to share this important information with you, and we are here to answer any questions that you may have of us. Thank you.
Great, thank you for your presentation. Just have a quick seat. We are going to go to a speaker that signed up. Mr. Dave Frye, you can come back up, and this is the item 7.2 that you can speak to.
I'm Dave Frye. I'm a resident of Sundance. I'm also an engineer, so I was a professional engineer. I just listened to this, and I don't have any dispute with it, but it doesn't really answer my questions. I'm a fan of May Day. I like watching May Day. I don't like watching planes crash. I like how they determine what was the problem and how to fix it so it doesn't happen again. I'm not seeing this. These are the questions I think you should ask, and I've got nine of them. What was the expected of this pipeline that failed after 49 years? Because I've read a report from the University of Utah that the average life expectancy of municipal water mains is 50 years. So when he says it was a low probability of failure, I don't agree with that. I think it's a high probability of failure. What were they assuming in their maintenance programs? Were they assuming this was 50 years or 100 years? It seems to me that if they're saying it was low probability, they're saying that this is a 100-year pipeline. I don't think that makes sense. What were the recommended maintenance procedures for this pipeline? What was the maintenance programs being carried out? When? How often? And when was it last done? This is a system-critical component. When it fails, we don't have redundancy. When these pipes fail, it's not just a leak that you can put an external collar on, keep everything running and doing it. It fails catastrophically, and it appears to take a month to fix, which means the city goes with severe water restrictions for a month. Were they doing any extra maintenance because of this? Did they realize this? Was there any special protocol in place to deal with the failure of this particular line, given all these critical situations? Did the Water Division realize this was a single-point failure, or was this a surprise to them? Because I would think that a competent water system management would realize that this is a serious risk they have. You do SWOT analysis, strengths, weaknesses, and threats. Someone should have been sitting there going, "We've got this pipeline that's going to break, and if it breaks, it breaks catastrophically, and if it does, it shuts down the city's water system." This should not have been a surprise. So going down to the key things. Did the Water Division recommend a council system upgrades to prevent this system from shutting down the water failure? If so, when were those recommendations done? How were they done? Were they done formally? Were they done informally? What was the thing? If they did that, they did their job, because I've worked in private industry, and I know that sometimes you're the technical people and you recommend this, and management decides something else. You can't be faulted for that. Conversely, did council get these recommendations and then decide to ignore them and spend money on other things and just hope for the best? These are the real questions, I think, the people of Calgary want answered. Now, I like watching May Day because I think it's a fair and balanced program. They don't go on witch hunts. They don't try and say, "Okay, this person made a really bad mistake, and it's 100% on them, and let's just pile onto this guy." On the other hand, they don't sweep things under the carpet. When mistakes are made, when it's a pilot error, when it's a maintenance mistake, or a management mistake at the airline, or a failure of the regulator, they state it, and they say, "This was a contributing factor that led to this situation." That's what I'm not seeing in this report. I'm sort of seeing that, you know, if this was a May Day episode, they'd just say, "Wow, the plane was old, things were corroded, mistakes were made, plane crashed, everybody died, the end." No, I get that. Pipes are old, they corrode, all these things happen, but you shut down the city's water system for three to four months last year, which caused a lot of us, including myself personally, a lot of grief in our life, and I'm frankly just terrified that we're going to get more and more of this. I'm glad to see that they're building in some redundancy, but they should be doing more of it. Adco, when they built the ring road right of way, moved all their high-pressure feeder mains for the city and put them right of way around the ring road. Well, if salts from the roads are corroding our water pipes, why are we not putting our water mains down the ring road right of way? And I'm out of time.
Thank you. Yeah, no, no, thank you. Just don't go away, just in case there's any questions for you. Thank you so much. I'm just going to go to the queue. No one has any questions for you. I have some questions for you.
Oh, okay.
You mentioned, you know, you used the example of May Day and planes and all that fun stuff, and it could be there's issues with planes and that's mechanical, or there could be issues with pilots. Are you thinking that what's missing out of the report is any of the operational day-to-day information, like pump operator information, like logbook, phone calls, things like that?
Yeah, I mean, my first thoughts was somebody said this happened right after a new pump station came online. You can get a phenomenon called hydraulic hammer, which I've dealt with in part of my career. I've seen failures of plant systems due to that. This didn't have that. He said there was no transient pressure thing going on with this thing. So, yeah, there are things, but I mean, it just seems like nobody wants to get to the issue here. Like, we went through a lot of grief all summer long. That was not a fun summer, and nobody's responsible. There has to be some accountability. I don't want to go on a witch hunt, but I do want to say, one of the groups or the other didn't do something, what should have been done.
Okay, I appreciate you being here and giving us your feedback. I don't foresee any other questions for you in the queue, but there are a lot of questions for administration, so hopefully some of your questions that you posed will get asked and answered today.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you so much. One more call out for item 7.2. Is there anyone else to speak to this item here? Okay, I don't see or hear anyone, so what we'll do is we'll go back to questions for administration, and I believe we're starting with Counselor Dollywell. Go ahead.
Thank you, Chair, and thank you for the presentation. Indeed, it's very technical. Let me start with something. In the main report, on the main page, it says the lack of chloride penetration and simultaneously simultaneous corrosion occurring is a reason, but then on attachment, I just want my understanding attachment to page one, it says predominantly due to high chloride concentrations. I'm a little confused. Chloride was a reason, but it says lack of chloride penetration?
Maybe what I would do is invite Mr. Duick up to the podium here and answer your question. Thank you.
Yes, Russ Duick with Associated Engineering. That's my signature on the report, or on the forensic report, I should say. So, are you talking specifically to the ruptured pipe or just in general?
Just the ruptured piece.
The ruptured piece, yes.
Element analysis and all that, and electromagnetic.
So in the ruptured pipe, so it's just the wording that was being used in the report. So in the ruptured pipe, the laboratory analysis of the mortar showed that there was no chlorides within the mortar itself, kind of infusing within the mortar, but chlorides or an aggressive soil environment had clearly passed through the mortar, but were not within the mortar. So what we're saying is that in the ruptured pipe specifically, there had to have either been cracks or microcrack in occurring allowed for that corrosive environment to reach the steel components. So that word penetration, what we're saying is, yeah, chlorides were not found within the mortar. It didn't infuse within intact mortar. There had to have been some sort of cracking or microcrack, and I hope that answers your question.
Perfect. Thank you. My next question is, asset management program process was established in 2008 based on experience stemming from previous feeder main breaks and soil conditions. So we had this data, we had this information, we must have learned some lessons. What happened here? Like, why wasn't our asset management program updated with preventive maintenance, periodic maintenance, to make sure that this does not happen?
That's a great question. Thank you. So yes, we do have a comprehensive asset management program with risk aligned to our risk management practices. The information that's used for that initial assessment, condition feeder main assessment, was based on experience that was obtained after the 2004 McKnight feeder main break. As I had previously mentioned in the presentation, it was identified that one of the modes of failure of that feeder main break was specifically with regards to sulfate attack with the pipe. So what the asset management program looks at then is, as a mode of failure, and we test as part of our soil testing program, is sulfate attack. What we found here is that, as specific to this feeder main, was sulfates were not necessarily a factor, and we were identifying high levels of chlorides along the feeder main in various locations, low, moderate, and high levels of chlorides. So this is one of our primary findings, is that we do need to identify what are the root causes for the increase of chlorides along the feeder main, as well to better understand both the impacts of chlorides on this particular piece of pipe and other pipes within the feeder main network.
Okay, but this report says, this report is not intended to be root cause analysis. So if it's not intended to be root cause analysis, how do we make sure that proper root cause analysis, taproot software, whatever we use, was done to reach the root cause?
We actually did undertake, immediately following the feeder main break, Associated Engineering did support us to undertake a root cause analysis on the original feeder main break.
Okay. My next question is, this is more of a technical question. It says the design pressure for the lowest portion of the feeder main would be 190 PSI. That's the city standard, but 166 PSI as per C304. Why would we be at higher pressure than what the specification is telling us?
Through the chair. So I can extrapolate a little more on that. So any feeder main or transmission pipe in the city has a design pressure rating based on the pump station, reservoir, pressure zone, and the elevation of the pipe. So in this case, that, you know, 126 working pressure, 190 is based on those specific conditions. So the city feeder main specifications, which have largely been used for many, many, many years, specify that you take that working pressure calculation and multiply it by either a transient allowance or a minimum of 1.5, and that's where the 190 comes from. C304 allows for just a very specific transient allowance on top of the working pressure, which is less than what the city's requirement is. So we're not saying in this report that every feeder main in the city is 190 PSI pressure rating. It's specific to this pipe, and C304's surge allowance is less than the city's typical requirement for surge allowance, if that makes sense.
Yeah, so the city's using 1.5 as a safety factor.
That's right, as the base safety factor. If there are conditions that warrant a higher safety factor, then those conditions are to be used, and that's in the city's specifications.
As your subject matter experts, shouldn't you recommend us to be using? As your subject matter experts, wouldn't, shouldn't you recommend us to be using lower safety factor given the age of this pipeline?
Well, this is a design rating. This wouldn't be a, an operating pressure rating. But, so that's assuming a properly, a good condition pipe, right? Upon new construction.
Yeah, that's what I didn't see here, that if, in the recommendation, was a normal operating pressure recommendation to reduce it or just given the growth of the city, the volume we need, we really can't do that?
Would you like me to? Okay, sure. Sorry, could you, could you just clarify that question so I can?
No, the question I have is like, yes, this is a design 1.5, but normal, that's MOP, maximum operating pressure. But if we are on the normal operating pressure, given the, what we just saw from, with the failure, that this pipe is in a, in my opinion, there's some work to be done on it. Why didn't, why couldn't we see a recommendation where we said, okay, let's bring the NOP down? Or is it not feasible given the growth and the volume needs and the, and the pressure head we need and all that?
I, I can answer that. From an associated standpoint, we were only brought in to look at the forensic, the, the results of the failure. We were not brought in in this report to look at the recommendations going forward.
Thank you. So this is troubling to me and please help me. Attachment to section 2.3, it says the carbon, the canron fabrication drawing and the city's records are missing a key page showing key design data and do not state the design pressure of the various pressure classes used along the pipe. That is concerning.
Well, it's, that, that's pretty, so, that's fairly typical for, it, it's, in, how would I answer for the engineer back in the day? It is, it is concerning in the sense that we wish we had that information. It is, I would say that the city's as-built records are probably some of the best in North America as far as having this information from 1975. Typically, they were included in the package from the manufacturer. We don't know whether it was just missing from the package that was submitted or what happened to it. And the manufacturer said they don't have it, have it either, so.
Okay, because C301 didn't have anything, it was an old standard, to look at these segment pressure ratings and at C304, my understanding is, has that standard now updated? So from engineering perspective, you feel like in your forensic analysis, that you could, would create confidence, say that this missing information didn't play a role in, in avoiding this thing?
Well, if you take a look at Pure Technologies' finite element analysis curves, there you'll see that the, this is where we get into old and new standards. So the, the actual structural integrity of the pipe, you know, assuming that there's no broken wires, et cetera, far, far exceeds the operating and maximum operating design pressure that it was intended to, to handle. The, but if you look at that limit state curve, I don't know if we have that, that graphic here, but there's, there's, there's four lines. And there's a bottom line which, which shows the microcracking. That line, to our knowledge, wasn't a consideration in design back in 1975. That was not a requirement to factor in potential microcracking. The wires, the steel, the cylinder, it was, it was designed appropriately for the standards at the time to handle, easily handle these pressures and has been confirmed through Pure Technologies' analysis here. So this essentially confirms our assumptions based on the, the material measurements that were made in the field.
Yeah, because that's, that's, like, we don't know what we don't know subsurface, chlorides, soil chemistry.
Yes.
But at least we knew that there was information missing from engineering perspective on technically, technicality, that we could have done some risk mitigation or upfront before the failure.
Sorry, now you're, you're talking about the asset management line? I would have to defer to Steve if he wants me to answer that.
Absolutely. No problem. Sorry, could you repeat the question, please?
Like I said, we knew there was an information missing, even pure, pure energies electromagnetic scans indicated that there were changes made during pipe fabrication and installation that were not captured on the record drawings. So we had lots of information missing. Why couldn't we de-rate this pipe or do some sort of a risk mitigation to bring this kind of failure to the lowest level? Because you said the probability was low. What I'm seeing in this report is probability was high.
So with regards to the missing information, I'm sorry, I don't have that in front of me. I, I'm not able to comment of the design specs at the time and what exactly the decisions were made. Again, we went through, we completed a comprehensive risk analysis multiple times and the risk was consistently identified as being low probability of failure.
This is again, figure 3.31 is also interesting. It shows the degree of corrosion occurring on the wires post-hydroplasting, even in the areas where concrete had not visibly cracked. Because we are saying microcracking is one of the reasons, but after hydroplasting, we are seeing that there's still damage to the wiring where the, where we didn't see microcracks. So that is concerning again to me because I want to understand what is the integrity of this pipe right now?
So I might, sorry, I might answer that question maybe a little longer. So now we're not just talking about the ruptured pipe, we're, we're talking about, about all the other distressed sections of the line. So, so the 80-inch, the 1950-millimeter pipe was comprised of Class 16 and Class 20 pipes, 16 and 20-foot lengths. Some of these pipes had wires that the lab testing showed were susceptible to hydrogen aberrailment and some that weren't susceptible to hydrogen aberrailment. As we exhume those pipes, some of the pipes had external cracking visible, others did not. And then as you go and order down, the lab testing showed that some of these pipes did have chlorides within the mortar. So the mortar was absorbing the chlorides and with others, there was no chloride absorption. And yes, these figures you're seeing pitting corrosion occurring. So there's only two ways for that corrosion to be occurring. It's either through aggressive soil environments coming through cracks in the mortar or, in the case of some of these pipes, you actually are having corrosion occurring because the mortar is actually perfectly intact. So one of the pipes, I don't have the number in front of me, when we brought it out to the yard and you looked at it before hydroblasting, you never would have guessed that there was broken wires. It's completely intact. Perfect. It looked perfect. But once you hydroblast, peel off that mortar, that's where we saw some of this damage occurring. And it was clear with some of these pipes that the chlorides were, were kind of diffusing through that mortar, being absorbed through the mortar and causing pitting corrosion on the wires. So because we have a mix of wires that are hydrogen aberrailment sensitivity, non-hydrogen aberrailment sensitivity, that's where we get, some, some wires had what we believe is pitting occurring due to the chlorides releasing hydrogen, causing hydrogen aberrailment cracking. We had other pipes where, or other wires on the same pipe in some cases where chlorides or whatever was coming through the mortar attacking the wires, causing what we call stress corrosion cracking, you know, hairline cracks and suddenly rupturing. So, so that could occur on, on a pipe that's cracked, a pipe that has microcracking invisible to the naked eye and as well as pipe that doesn't have microcracking due to chloride infusion of the mortar. So that's why we have multiple different attacks or, or causes on this pipe, pipeline segment with very different factors which, with each area that we looked at.
Okay. I had a couple, three more questions. So you're saying because C304 requires certain sort of limits as per period's performance curves on the design?
C304 now. C304 did not exist at the time of this pipe was manufactured.
But in your report, you're saying that it is possible that the design of the pipe did not account for the microcracking?
It is possible.
Okay. That's your tech, professional assessment. Now I want to look at the soil. I heard soil, water table changing and all that introduced chlorides into the soil. And M9 requires right now supplement protection for C301 pipe.
Yeah.
In here, none of the mitigative steps outlined in M9 were applied to the feeder main. Don't you think that's concerning, given the soil chemistry that we are seeing this kind of attack from chlorides?
So upon installation of the pipe, that standard didn't exist. Upon installation of the pipe, based on the 2014 soil samples we have, the soils were not probably aggressive at the time of installation either. So therefore, these, and, and to go into your comment, these additional parameters per M9 is, is a moisture barrier, change of the, the mortar chemistry and as well as cathodic protection. Moisture barrier and silica fume would be done at time of construction. So M9 and soil conditions would have not warranted that at the time. The city does have cathodic protection in place on majority of its assets and in, in this case, it's not advisable to put it in because, because impressed current on the pipeline on a C301 pipe can actually cause hydrogen aberrailment and actually make the situation worse. So that is a business decision that I would have to have the city answer, but there, there's risks with cathodic protection on a, on a, on a C301 pipe.
Yeah, my, my biggest concern is like, you know, I think cathodic protection will not help us either. I, I struggle with like, my, what I see here is microcrack, microcracking is the primary reason, in my opinion, behind the failure.
I would say it's one of potentially two.
Yeah.
Chlorides and microcracking.
And chlorides can only penetrate, have a more likelihood of penetrating through microcracking.
More likelihood, but we found pipes to where it would have penetrated, it penetrated regardless of microcracking.
And, and based on the design criteria and all that, C301 and my assessment, I'm, I could be wrong, you're a professional, this pipeline will be prone to more microcracking in future years, given what I'm seeing, soil chemistry, chlorides, groundwater, table changing and all that.
As for next steps, certainly our, our forensic report has provided information for the city to make their determination of risk and probability and next steps. I, I can answer what they wish, but I might let Steve answer that and I, I can answer anything he does, he wants me to.
As to next steps, as I've previously mentioned in the presentation, we are absolutely committed to ensuring that we include soil, or, sorry, include chlorides as a predominant measure within our soil testing program as well to, we have already started to take steps as to assess the entire feeder main network and the impact of the findings from this particular report on not just the Bears Passell feeder main, but the entire feeder main network, including the results, the impacts of soils, as well to is trying to get a better understanding of why we're seeing elevated soils from 2014 to 2024. That is a fairly significant finding in, in my understanding as well too.
Councillor Dollywell, I made, my name's Sarah Huber, Manager, Utilities Project Development. I wanted to chime in on a question that I don't feel you got a complete answer to around the high prob, high probability of failure of this asset and the impact on the system. So I wanted to elaborate on that.
Please.
You mentioned that there were missing pieces of information that in our historical records, you're correct, we were aware of that. In 2013, a decision was made by the utility to operate this asset at a lower operating pressure, far reduced from the design pressure. That was based on what we felt, we were confident in operating the asset, the pressure we were confident to operate the asset at, given the lack of understanding that we had in that historical data. Over the course of time since then, we've been taking steps to mitigate the impact of a potential failure of this asset on the system. That's not the point of today, I can go into more elaboration on that in the future. But what I want to say is that we treaded carefully, appreciating the impact of that failure, potential impact of that failure. But we also want to recognize that the data that we had access to, and Steve elaborated on soil conditions, didn't point to this being a high probability of failure in our system. Gaps, yes, and learnings that we're going to be applying and actively are, absolutely. But I think that the course of action that we took really, or steps that potentially mitigated the, what could be a high probability, but with all data pointing to the lower probability.
Yeah, no, that's, that's great. So my question is, what we know now, we know missing data, design parameters are missing, specifications have changed, new requirements are there, engineering assessment, finite element analysis and all of that, how does our probability of failure change? Are we going to bump the probability because we know there's lots of unknowns?
That's a conversation that we're going to be bringing back to council in February as Steve alluded to in his presentation. I think your points are absolutely valid and are questions that we're working to answer ourselves, but we'll be involving council in that discussion.
Okay. And are we going to put some measures in place like more often soil sampling, groundwater, water monitoring wells and so on, so on, to make sure that we stay on top of it? Because to me acoustic, yes, we have acoustic monitoring, but that does not, that only tells us when the things have happened, the wire has broken. What is proactive approach to make sure that we are monitoring it on continuous basis?
The short answer is absolutely yes.
Okay. Perfect. So, great. My last question is for engineering team and it will be, this is, your assessment, thank you for this, this is great. I didn't get a chance to read this whole thing. Redundancy that we are talking about, do you have a recommendation how we can make sure that we bring the probability of another failure down? Or I, I'm sorry, I'm going to say this, or run it to failure?
You're ask, you're asking Associated Engineering about probability?
If I could just interject there. So the scope of work that we're talking about here today is the pipe investigation findings and that was the scope that we asked Associated to focus on. As Ms. Huber did point out, that we are bringing a report forward early in next year to talk about redundancy on the pipe and so we'll be able to talk more about it then.
Yeah, no, that's good because we have already spent over $50 million in fixing 29 spots and I just want to make sure whatever the plan forward is, is economical, cost-effective and has a robust design into it. Don't want to see us just building a pipeline, another pipeline adjacent to it, just because we know this is, this has a higher probability of failure. Thank you so much. That's it for me, Chair. Thank you.
Great, thank you so much. I will go to councillor Wong, please.
Thank you, Chair. First, let me start by saying thank you to Dr. Bouchard. Again, you and I have dealt with each other many times over and so thank you for your service and that. Also want to say thank you to our public speaker, Dave, Dave for your, your perspective on this. And Mr. White, thank you for being here. And thank you for the presentation. It was very thorough and I think to some extent, very technical for the public audience as well. And perhaps we can do a little 101 and say, what's, what's some of these technical terms mean? Where, 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 sorry, where I really want to focus is on the, you know, the segment that broke more than anything else. So when you take a look at from Homelode all the way out to Crowchild, you take a look at 33rd Avenue in particular, the question I have first off is that, you know, in, in my involvement in the city and my involvement with engineers, we do soil condition testing all the time, correct?
We do have a soil condition assessment program, yes.
Yeah. And, and I mean, what I'm saying is we've been doing this for decades.
Yes, we have been undertaking soil condition assessments for the entire feeder main network, yes.
Okay. So going back to when I got involved with the city and engineering, which is back in the 1990s timeframe, what has changed in our soil condition assessment process between 99 and today that we could have done differently or should have done differently earlier?
Just talking with our internal experts just fairly recently, something we've noted is that since about 2017 or so, we have reduced the number of soil condition assessments and that's something that is specific that we will be leaning into harder going forward is to increase the number of soil condition assessments along the feeder main network.
Was that reduction because of operational or finance or was the reason for changing it?
I'm sorry, I'm unable to speculate on that right now.
Okay.
Is there any common question?
The program was complete in that it covered all the geographic areas of where our feeder mains are. I would say that the failure and what we've probably realized is the frequency that that program needs to be refreshed to program needs to be refreshed to revisit those geographical areas, given what we now know about considerable soil chemistry changes in such a limited amount of time.
Okay. I guess, and don't go away, thank you. I guess when we talk about this particular area, we're talking about a particular type of pipe, as opposed to the type of pipe using, used across the rest of the network, right? So with this type of pipe, with the concrete, you know, and everything else as such, wouldn't this be an area that we would have provided more intense focusing on, on testing, as opposed to dropping off from, as you say, in 2017?
Absolutely. It's going to be the area of focus that we continue to do soil testing, as my colleague alluded to.
Okay. The other question that I have here again is, when we talk about these, the chlorides, and I believe, Steve, you made reference to, most of chlorides are speculated because of road salt chlorides, is that correct?
There is a finding that, yes, there is a relationship between the road deicing materials and the higher levels of chlorides in the soils.
Yeah. What makes this area that particular? Because we use the same, I presume, same type of salt, salt pepper, or whatever you call it, across the entire city. What makes this particular segment on 33rd Avenue and on, you know, 16th Avenue, Homerood area, what makes this segment that much more vulnerable, if I can use that term?
I'm not sure if I could comment on why specifically it's more vulnerable. What I do find interesting is that along the entire segment, you're seeing locations where there's low, moderate, and high levels of chlorides. So if it was directly attributed just to the use of road deicing materials along the road network, then I would have assumed that would have been a more consistent high level of chlorides across the entire feeder main network, and that is the reason why we do have to undertake further study to better understand exactly why do you have differing levels of chlorides along that feeder main, as well to is the increase of feeder main, of chlorides, pardon me, from 2014 to 2024.
Yeah, because that's, I think that's the concern I have more than anything else, is that we hit certain spots as opposed to that consistent application. And I guess the other question, maybe not for yourself perhaps, from mobility, and have we changed our technique of laying road salts down that has created this vulnerability area?
We've been in communications with mobility and talking with them about some of these conversations, and that's something that we would have to, again, bring back as subject to a further study, further report.
Okay. And going back to mobility, again, only constituents are asking the same question. Was there any recorded episode where there was excess of chlorides put in these particular areas, because a spill, like we could have had a traffic accident, for example, where there was a spill where it was leaching in the ground? Do we have records of that to kind of get to the root cause?
As was identified in the report, actually, there was an extensive geo-environmental review that was undertaken. It did actually take a look at the review of historic activities along the feeder main network. I'm not aware of specifically an identification of spills or excessive use of deicing materials in any one location.
Okay. And unnecessary deicing material, somebody made a statement with regards to the 33rd Avenue bonus area, in other words, if there was a spill along the railway tracks that could have seeped under, would that have been a concern?
Again, I'm not aware of any particular locations where that may have occurred.
Okay.
Get your results.
Okay. Going to your chart there, if you can bring it up, that's one on risk management, the high probability, high impact. You indicated in point number two there, quadrant number two, that there was areas of high impact with low probability. Were those areas within this region here, or no?
Sorry, the question, you're talking about area two where it's low impact and high probability? No. So there's other locations within the city's feeder main network that were identified as being low impact and high probability.
And have those areas been addressed already?
Yes, they had.
Okay. So moving to number three then, number three, I think I heard you say, the self feeder main is in quadrant number three, correct?
That's correct.
Okay. And to Counselor Dolewol, I really do appreciate Counselor Dolewol being here, being his professional expertise in engineering, he asks far more questions than I can even imagine. But the question I guess I have here is similar to his, low probability and again, high impact, from a risk management, asset management perspective, why would we not regard those, you know, high impact as, even though it's low probability, as a higher course of action?
I really appreciate your question, as I've committed to in the presentation as well. This is something we have to take away, understanding the considerable impact, the consequence of the impact of this failure. We do have to reimagine, rethink what our asset management program looks like and the criteria that we use to assess our feeder main network.
Okay. And, sorry, Dr. Bouchard.
If I may add to that, you know, when you look at the difference between two and three, two is about saying we never want to have a failure, because the probability is high, we should be doing an inspection. Area three really is about saying that a failure has a significant impact. So it becomes a question of, are you investing and are you doing your inspections to understand where the failures could occur and address a reduction in failure? Or are you trying to address the fact that a failure could be high impact? And when you're in area three, it's not necessarily about inspections, it's actually about, do you have sufficient redundancy in your system? And that's what our long-range plans were meant to target. So from an asset perspective, asset management, as Mr. Whiten has indicated, we're definitely using this and learning from this in terms of making changes. But from an inspection perspective, the inspections really focus on that area one and two, as opposed to area three, where it's really about more investments into your system to add to the redundancy, so that even if the likelihood of failure is extremely, extremely small, if it happens, you can continue providing the service. And again, I want to highlight the fact that that redundancy is, it's a scale. It's not, you have redundancy or you don't. And that was exemplified by the fact that many days, we still were able to provide 500 megaliters a day to all Calgarians during the repairs. So it becomes a question of, do you have enough redundancy, as opposed to saying we didn't have it, and therefore our whole system collapsed?
And perhaps to build on that as well, too, then, thank you, Dr. Bouchard. There were also identified parts of the feeder main network that were experiencing breaks or highly likely to experience breaks in the very near future. So the probability of impact, the priority, if you will, was to identify and to fix those particular areas that were experiencing breaks or were about to experience breaks.
Okay. I noticed in here, it said the term transient pressure was not a cause of this.
That's correct, yes.
Okay. The, one of the questions that we were debating in a previous council meeting was the increase of development in the area, particularly Montgomery bonus, recognizing Montgomery bonus as a township, you know, annexed into the city. Again, I know revisiting the question we asked before, but increasing development in the area, will it create an additional stress in this area?
Again, I think that's a subject that's outside of the conversation, this particular pipe finding investigation.
But I will jump in regardless. You ask whether or not redevelopment densification would have an impact. At the end of the day, the local system within a community tends to be overdesigned, so that based on the fact that you've got set sizes for pipes, you typically end up with a pipe that's a little bit bigger than what you originally had anticipated. Also, that system tends to be highly connected, and therefore, the failure of one pipe doesn't have an impact on our ability to supply water through that community. So it becomes a question of simply, should you have redevelopment in areas that are older because they simply have older infrastructure? And this is the question that we're always asking ourselves in terms of the rate at which we do main replacements. But that main replacement is needed regardless of whether or not you're going to see increased densification. Densification itself isn't going to change the conditions of the pipe, isn't going to change the probability that that pipe is going to fail.
And as we've talked about, Counselor Wong as well, I just would add that, and I think as we've talked about before, development and redevelopment, each application, the infrastructure is evaluated, and so it's an ongoing process of evaluation.
Appreciate that, sir. In the report itself, and this is on page two of four, top of it, it makes reference to enhanced emergency response plans have been developed and expanded spare part inventory on hand. Can you just tell us what has been done recently and how that protects us in the future?
Absolutely, thank you. Maybe what I will do is invite Mr. Ryan Kidd. Ryan, do you want to talk about our maintenance programs?
Good morning, everyone. My name is Ryan Kidd, I'm the deputy director of Water Services. So in regards to our emergency response plan, the work that Mr. Whiten mentioned, we were undertaking prior to, prior to the pipe inspection that we were preparing for, we did put together a specific emergency response plan, and really what that is targeting, making sure the valves that we needed to shut off were shut off, people knew what they needed to do in the event of that break, and really kind of have a systematic approach to make sure that everyone from an operational perspective knew what was going to happen. We did understand that if we needed to shut down the feeder main, there would be service impacts as a result, too.
Okay. So this enhanced plan applies to not just Bears Pass, but Glenmore, the entire network?
I guess overall, yes, like we do have general plans where if there are system failures, we know how to respond and isolate the problem, correct the problem as quickly as we can. And when there is the ability to reroute flows, implement bypasses, those kinds of things to provide better or improved service, we do have that as part of those plans.
Mr. Kidd, I just want to say, first off, going back to the episode in July, August, and everything, I would just want to compliment yourself, the senior manager in your group, as well as, you know, right down to the person digging a ditch and fixing it, thank you for the quality of work that's been done there. Mr. Bouchard?
Yeah, I also want to add to the enhanced emergency response plan, a lot of the work that we do is before the emergency happens, and one of the things that we have in place specifically for this feeder main now is real-time monitoring. At the end of the day, this pipe is going to fail because of wire snaps. That's the mechanism by which the pipe will break. And those wire snaps now are being monitored. So rather than getting to the point where we have an emergency, we will have a planned repair. And the planned repairs allows us to be able to better mitigate the impacts during the repair, just like when we did the repairs to the 1500, many people forgot that we, two weeks ago, we finally wrapped up that work in terms of the repairs in that section of the system. That's because it was planned, and therefore, we can work through the details to make sure that we minimize the impacts. And for the 1500, that included insulation of a new pipe segment so that we would ensure that that disruption to service didn't happen. So again, it happens way before we actually are in a situation where it's an emergency.
Thank you, Dr. Bouchard. Thank you for the confidence and assurity that that's exactly what the public's looking to hear, but again, things do happen, and hopefully not to the same extent we have today. My last comment is just to Mr. Whiten, you and I go back a number of years, and you actually mentioned me on asset management, infrastructure asset management, so thank you for, you know, this comprehensive report, and thank you for the program. I think the last question I have is, again, we'll go back to when you and I talked about this about 15, 18 years ago, and strengthening our asset management program across the city, particularly from a preventive perspective, you know, what more can we do, what, ask council to support you?
Thank you, thank you for the question. Again, I think this is an opportunity, and at risk of, again, really under stressing the importance of the situation that occurred. This is an opportunity for us as engineers and as scientists and technical individuals to understand that our asset management programs need to continually evolve and improve. So this is a learning that we will be taking away as part of our risk management approaches to figure out how we should be better assessing and better planning for our infrastructure in the event it fails. As well to something that you will be seeing, that we will be bringing forward in Q1 of next year, is our infrastructure status report, and I think that's going to be a larger conversation, not just about the feeder main, but including the feeder main, and what we can do differently and as we're prioritizing investing in all of our infrastructure across multiple asset classes.
Thank you for that.
Thank you.
Enjoy.
Okay, thank you very much. We will go to Counselor Spencer.
Thank you, Chair. Wanted to start with the engineers from associate engineering and their report. There wasn't page number, so, but there's the section five under finite element analysis and limited state design. I thank you, Counselor Dolewol, for your really excellent questions, you helped pinpoint mine even a little bit better. There's a part in here where you talk about that there's a possibility that surge pressures resulted in microcracking. I'm wondering if you can kind of just give us, you mentioned the fact that the transient surge allowance in this pipe was not as high in various areas as the city's specifications. Can you give a little bit of context behind that? Because you also mentioned how we line up and relate to other jurisdictions, and that that might not be all too uncommon. I'm curious if you could put a little color around the edges of those comments.
Specific with respect to the surge pressures?
Yeah.
Yeah. So with the finite, maybe I'll go back, where to start is the question. Maybe I'll start with the microcracking. So there's two ways microcracking can occur. Because obviously, you know, as the public submissions say, you know, I still want to know why, right? Why did this happen? So the microcracking happens due to either internal or external stresses. Obviously, internal can be pressures, so if I go down that path right now, pressures, what we've established is the normal operating pressure and the pressure just before the failure, were not, had no impact on the structural integrity of this pipe. What we don't, what we don't know, I don't think anyone can actually answer, is was there a spike at some point since 1975? And all it takes is one.
Right.
One spike that occurred, and it caused some microcracks on some sections of the pipe. We also don't know, and you'll see in the report, we talk about live loading subsequent to construction. We don't know during construction how that pipe was handled, how that pipe, was a vibratory load placed on that pipe? We do know that vibratory loads are very, very, and to this day, in the feeder main specifications, vibratory loads are very important on the integrity of C301 pipe during backfill. So we don't, we don't know those conditions, and there won't be documentation on that. Same with the transient pressures, you know, the technologies have improved nowadays to detect those things. Those weren't in place and didn't exist back in 1975, necessarily, at least in our system. So, you know, so that's where surge is a possibility, you know, back in 1975, and that's where, when you go to the finite element analysis, that's why I mention it. In the operating pressure, there's no issue, but yes, surge could push above that blue line, that lower curve in that line, causing microcracking to occur.
Does that? That's super helpful.
Okay.
Yeah. I'm curious, when you, when you think about like a minor transient event, you use some language that lead me towards like tamping down a road surface or pile driving.
Oh.
Like what would be an example of a minor transient event?
So, sorry, when we speak about transient event, sorry, with respect to this report, we're talking about internal pressure wave in the water and the pipe.
So not external?
Not external. When we talk about live loading, that would be external.
Okay.
And when I talk about vibratory loading, like verbally to you here, that would be external, like during backfill. But no, when we talk about transient or surge in the report, it's specifically internal.
The internal, that's helpful. Thank you for, I'm not a technical expert, like my counterpart over here. Okay, so the live loading on the outside, depending on the strength of the event, could have added microcracks potentially, and then, and then the transient pressure, a surge inside, like your meetings in the middle essentially.
Yeah. It could come from external or internal, those microcracks, yeah.
Okay, that's super helpful. So the transient pressure inside, you're saying it very confidently that you don't suspect that the operations of this pipe ultimately, particularly in the early stages of its life, led to this. Would that be accurate? Would that be accurate?
No, I think what the report, what the report's saying is that the transient event did not cause the rupture. There might, we do say in the report, there may have been a surge event at some point in its life that caused micro-cracking. But what we do know for certain is that that surge event was not strong enough to cause yielding of the wires.
Okay.
It was well within the structural capacity of the pipe, any surge event that occurred. We did not see any necking to indicate, of those wires to indicate that a surge event was high enough to really stress that pipe. So that's where we have to go back to those 1975 standards, you know. Minor micro-cracking over time was not a consideration in the design of the pipe at that, you know, or was not, limit state design, we call it, was not a C304 standard. We don't know from the manufacturer what the considerations were.
Okay.
Does that answer?
Yeah, that helps. And then, so obviously, as you go back and you look at the data, and it's limited as it's been daylighted before, you don't, running that pipe at a high operations for a long period of time likely could have contributed, but you're not concerned specifically about that?
No. I mean, to be honest, it's not even about running the pipe at a higher pressure would have contributed to, sorry, a higher pressure, let me rephrase that. The pumps that are installed at the pump stations that impact this pipe, on normal operating conditions, as city crews would be trained to operate, you could max out those pumps and this pipe should be able to handle that without micro-cracking. It's if there's another anomaly of an event, but that might have contributed to micro-cracking, you know, some sort of electrical shutdown or things like that. But even associated modeling has shown that would still be pretty minor.
Okay.
So, you know, can I say with 100% certainty? No. But it's really not pointing towards city operations, pump operations, valve operations causing or contributing to this at this point.
Awesome. Thank you. I mean, I really appreciate your perspective, that third party. Obviously, we have had a lot of armchair quarterbacks on this, looking at it from many, many different angles. And I think this is helpful, particularly for me, that somebody who's trying to rebuild confidence, to be able to come back to the findings and be able to explain it, at least in layman's terms.
Try to.
And then point them back to the report. So thank you very much.
Okay, thank you.
No further questions, Chair.
Excellent. I will go to Councilor Wyness.
Thanks. Okay, I don't know where to start, there's so many things. We've kind of talked a little bit, but I guess maybe I'll start with the risk analysis since it's on the screen. What were your metrics in this? So we put the pipe in three, high impact, low probability. But how are we, what was the model of our risk analysis that put it there? What factors were you putting in? We know that there are engineering reports that said this era of pipe was a bad pipe. So what were we using in our risk model?
Thank you for the question, Chair. So there was multiple metrics, multiple criteria that we use as part of our risk analysis. Some of those were experience from past feeder main breaks, including the McKnight feeder main break, soil conditions, expert opinion, third-party expert opinion on the performance on this type of pipe in other jurisdictions, other cities, municipalities, amongst others.
So we know that Epcore purchased a PCC pipe that was newer than this version. There's a report that was published. So how did we incorporate that data into our risk model?
To my awareness, that that experience has not been incorporated into our risk modeling, I'm sorry.
So, and I'm kind of curious, like even with what you just described, it sounds like we're using more just city limits and not North America experience with this pipe. Is that correct or am I totally out in left field?
No, to the best of my knowledge, actually, we do use external, third-party experience as well, too. So for example, Pure Technologies, when we do our finite element analysis on the pipe, we do use experience from multiple jurisdictions to confirm what the total pressure rating of the pipe would be, that would be part of our risk analysis.
Can you give me an example of which external jurisdiction we've used? Because we obviously didn't use the Epcore example, so I'm just kind of curious.
So again, a little more detail, Pure Technologies does have a fairly large database of experience from multiple jurisdictions. I can't tell you exactly which jurisdictions that's part of their library of pipe experience. Ms. Huber?
Yeah, I'll maybe just jump in and elaborate on some of Steve's points. A number of parameters were developed in the risk model, some of them pretty obvious, flow, size, material type, et cetera, soils. We don't typically take one experience in another municipality and use it to verify our own model. We would use condition assessment and our own inspections and understanding of our local environment to really validate and calibrate our own model. So as we were inspecting the various components of our system, that data was coming back in and validating if the risk model was appropriate and this event will be used in the same facet. But to Steve's point, all the experiences across North America for this type of material are really collated best in things like the finite element analysis for then use in an analytical purpose to extrapolate things like the structural integrity of these types of pipes.
But even in your answers previously leading up to this, we've stated that we were just buying the technology to get it. We stopped doing regular soil testing, and so when you listen to the lead-up of it, we were making decisions that took us further and further away from actually monitoring our pipe, at least from what I'm hearing today, what I'm reading in reports. So can you circle hot square for me? Because yes, you're stating it now, but your actions in the lead-up to this were going in the opposite direction.
So I'm going to take a guess that you're talking about the pipediver technology?
Yeah.
Okay. The pipediver technology was first utilized in Calgary in our system in 2019 for the inspection of our, what we call the Airdrie feeder main, which is also PCCP. Other components of our system that are also comprised of PCCP pipe can be taken out of service, drained, and inspected using different technologies. That was the practice that we had prior to the pipediver. The pipediver allowed us to inspect in wet environments, undrained assets, which was required in order for us to inspect the Bear's Paw South feeder, ideally.
What was the age of the Airdrie pipe versus our main feeder? Is it newer? I just need to know what direction, is the Airdrie connection older or newer than the feeder?
1981, same vintage.
But when did we install that one versus when did we install the feeder main?
It would have been installed when the pipe was manufactured around the same time.
So 75, we put the feeder main in, and then the 80s, we put Airdrie in?
That's right.
Okay, so then that leads me to my next question. Airdrie was technically a newer pipe than our feeder main. Why did we prioritize that pipe over one we had zero redundancy for?
It's a great question and it's one that I also have. I don't want to point to Russ, but he actually made a more on the historical significance of that. I do feel that redundancy was perhaps underrated on our risk model and flow rate was used as a proxy for redundancy. The Airdrie feeder main does have partial redundancy, so does the Bear's Paw South feeder. If we were to, if I was to go back and redo that, I would have switched the order of them.
Yeah, and this is my challenge. What I'm hearing is we didn't really have a solid foundation of risk assessment because we're choosing something that has a redundancy, is newer to evaluate and actually get some kind of physical, and then the one we have zero redundancy in and is an older pipe we're ignoring. Is, am I wrong again to say that one? Or is, because that's what you've just described.
I would challenge your comment on zero redundancy. Perhaps insufficient redundancy?
They'll call it insufficient. I can adjust to that because, like, but to the general public, it was, it does feel like there was zero because of the severity of water restrictions. For communities, there was zero redundancy other than bottled water, like, so I guess we can say depending on your proximity in the network, some of you had kind of zero redundancy until we could get some patches in.
The zero redundancy, I think what you're elaborating on is the boil water advisory that unfortunately, the community of Buenos had to suffer, was absolutely caused by the rupture and the potential contaminants that might have entered the system in that specific area. So redundancy is not a parameter for water quality in the system. So it's really a provision of the supply of water.
So when you think redundancy in your network, you're only thinking about movement of water, not about potability?
Well, the assumption is that the water that we're moving is potable. In a boil water situation, it's due to an emergency event which might have caused the contaminants to enter the system. And it's a cautionary tactic that we use to protect public health and safety.
Yeah. Although we still had the issue during our shutdown that we wouldn't have had the volume of water to flush the contaminant out of our network, which is why there is a big concern during the restrictions.
If the contamination had extended beyond simply because of depressurization of the system.
Yeah.
So it's a little different than what you're suggesting. If I may, I'd like to circle back in terms of, I think that you were asking whether or not we use information from other jurisdictions, and we absolutely do. The city of Calgary is part of the National Water and Wastewater Benching Initiative. For many years, we have been participating with that initiative to share key benchmarking metrics so that we understand where we sit relative to other water utilities across Canada. And as part of this initiative, there are also regular meetings of those utilities to share asset management practices. So we are not working in isolation, we're not ignoring what's happening in the rest of Canada and the world. We actually have our professionals come together and share the learnings because it is a very complex system that we're operating. And the specifics of the assets that we're trying to manage are such that there are many practices that you can use in other industries that you simply can't use in the specific industry. So we don't work in isolation, we do work with other municipalities, including during the event. We were on the call with many other municipalities across Canada, trying to identify the best way for us to manage this event.
But in, I like that you bring in Canada, but it seems like most municipalities feel like we're not getting it right. Like Montreal had a major blowout. I can't remember, there's a couple of other municipalities that had this. So the processes that are in place for removing potable water, I'm going to challenge, is that we need to do an update of our risk model. Because Montreal, I think, was lucky, it was close to the port when it blew out. But it was the same visuals that we had here and same volume of water just dumping out into the community.
So I think that what those events highlight is the fact that this is not unique to Calgary. This is a challenge that we have across the industry, not just within Canada, but in the United States as well. There was also an event in Atlanta around the same time. And as we learn from these experiences, unfortunately, sometimes you do need these failures to advance the knowledge of what are the mechanisms by which you're going to have to safeguard against. As we, as an industry internationally, as we learn more, we develop and improve incrementally the approaches that we take to risk assessment. But at the end of the day, we use data-driven methodologies, risk-based methodologies, to make these decisions. And that's the practice in terms of asset management.
But that's the challenge where the data to the average citizen is like, you got it wrong. Because we weren't incorporating things like what happened. I'm going to keep going back to Epcore because it's already been acknowledged, we didn't incorporate that into our risk analysis, where the PCCP pipe has studied in the lead-up into this, showing that there is weaknesses, it's not a 100-year pipe. And that seems to be quite known in, well, I can't, you guys didn't know it, but other engineers do say they did know the PCC pipe has fatal flaws. We look at the manufacturing of steel and at a peak boom time of building for the Olympics, which is, I'm probably going to ask a little bit more of my questions. But again, it's like, I don't want to, I'm elective, I guess I should speak for citizens, in that they're really challenged by this failing of potable water and our, we didn't think about it anymore. So that's why I'm going to keep challenging on some of the statements where I'm hearing, no, we use all this data, database is driven, and then I'll ask an example on data and you say it wasn't in. So how do we get that to be actual, consistent in messaging?
So I don't think that...
Before you, sorry, so sorry, before you answer that, I have to do procedural check. Council, or Council Committee?
Break for lunch.
Just one second. We've got a couple of things going on. I'm just checking the time and there's only a couple more people in the queue. I was wondering if we could have general consent to suspend the procedural ballot to finish this item. And then the other thing, Mayor Gondak does need to leave to go to an event, so if it's okay with the committee, I'm going to let her speak right after Council Wyness and ask questions so she gets the opportunity. Are we, do you have any issues with that? Sounds good? I think we can finish this, Council Wyness, and then you're off for the rest of the day. Is that okay? All right, let's do that. Are you good with that, Council Wyness? Are you sure? Okay. So sorry, so we will continue and then have Mayor Gondak jump the queue.
So I don't think that, and correct me if I'm wrong, I don't think that, and if that's the impression that we've given to you, then my apologies, but we understand that there's issues with PCCP pipe. But at the same time, there's lots of PCCP pipe that is being used right now in many municipalities that are still in very good condition or good condition. Our inspection has shown that a significant portion of this pipe is still in good condition in terms of its structural integrity, which is really what we're talking about today. And therefore, you know, like saying that we ignored that information and that we were blind to that information, no. But what we did was use the available data that we had to make risk-based decisions. I want to remind everyone that when you use a risk-based methodology, sometimes things still fail. It's a methodology, though, that allows you to make best use of the resources that you have.
Okay. Let's go to the cracking in the pipe. And so I'm still kind of curious on what caused the cracking. So yes, we said, we kind of talked about pressures, we talk about chloride. What is a sequence of events that you would determine led to our micro-cracking?
So again, I just want to reiterate, it may not just be micro-cracking causing the corrosion, but also penetration of the mortar from chlorides. But the micro-cracking specifically, there's only, there's only two ways. You have extreme external stresses or extreme internal stresses. We've established that those internal stresses were not a factor in recent memory, recent times. We can't rule out that extreme internal pressures were not a factor back in 1976, let's say. But that, we do know that, you know, the pumps that are installed, et cetera, are well within the design parameters of that pipe. So when that occurred, we don't know. We also can't rule out that micro-cracking wasn't caused during, during backfilling activities or transport of the pipe from the manufacturer, et cetera, of certain pipes. It's also quite interesting to note just how this damage has occurred. It's not, you know, it's just spread out throughout. That makes it really hard to pinpoint, you know, why, why that micro-cracking occurred and when.
And so just for clarity, because I'm looking at different maps, was the micro-cracking, the majority of it was done along roadway networks? Because like when you look at the pipe, we traverse roadways and then we go into kind of green space, like, did you have a pattern where the roadways could be assumed?
There's, so we can't specifically say micro-cracking because obviously when a pipe's already distressed, we can't say that, I can't say that micro-cracking was on that pipe because it's already broken apart. But the distressed sections along the feeder main showed no pattern related to live loads from roads and things like that. So there was no, as we say in the report and as was in the presentation, there's, live loading subsequent to construction is not believed to be a factor of that micro-cracking.
Okay. And were there any power surges in the network leading up to the catastrophic event?
Not in the analysis that was done, there's no pressure spikes to indicate. Let me put it this way, even if there was a transient surge in the last 10 years, the evidence of the forensic investigation shows that this damage would have occurred long, long ago, not just leading up to the failure.
Yeah, like, I like the guy's made it, the presentation, because like when I've watched discovery of catastrophic failing, sometimes the trigger is 10 years out. discovery of catastrophic failing, sometimes the trigger is 10 years out, or like, because I like to watch the ships ones, because then they'll have a weld, and the vibrations of going into the wave led to the boat to crack apart. And so can you give me a kind of like, a succinct summary of like, what do you think actually led to the final fail in the lead-up to blowout? Was it, like, what was the, because it was operating at a pressure that was consistent, and then all of a sudden the wall fell out?
It would be time.
Time?
It's purely time and corrosion. It's so, so what's occurring here is, an aggressive environment, as we've shown, has attacked the steel structural components of the pipe. They corrode over time. One by one, those wires break. As more wires break, there's more stresses on the remaining wires, and they just start to snap, snap, snap. And then at some point in time, you have so many wires broken that the internal pressure can't be held anymore, and then it ruptures. So a corrosion process, once it starts, in this case, only gets worse.
We talked a little bit about the change in chloride pressure, so it's, or chloride in the, around the pipe. Do you think, did you look at the impacts of the flood in the area of this pipe? And could that have led to like, a flushing of the chloride, and that is why we're seeing it constantly climb?
That wasn't, that's a difficult one to answer. There's no indication to pinpoint a flood or other event geographically.
We had one, so like, I'm just kind of curious, was that evaluated on what segments of the pipe were covered in the pipe? And then, because if you look at data, like, we were testing soil, and if you could see the loop of, we had chloride up here, flood comes, chloride goes down, and then climbs back up, you would assume that the flood flushed and cleaned the pipe area, which could have led to a different reaction.
So flood, surface water, doesn't necessarily indicate groundwater. And so there is monitoring underway at this point to determine how the groundwater is moving along the pipeline. It is not--
But it wasn't looked at, or wasn't in?
Flood specifically was not, to my knowledge, was not considered in, we didn't map it in relation to the chlorides.
Sorry, if I could interject, I just want to remind committee that the flood was in 2013, and our previous soil survey was done in 2014. So after 2014, the chloride levels were low. It didn't indicate that we had a chloride risk.
But did we have a sample from, say, 2010 for chloride?
To my knowledge, in this vicinity, I don't believe we, actually, I would have to, I'd have to go back to the city to look at their records.
Yeah, because that might have to be a follow-up for admin to say, I mean, when was, prior to 2014, when was the last chloride assessment of the area?
That's something I'll have to get back to you on. I don't have that answer.
Okay, awesome. All right, I'm going to take a break, and then I'll ask my other ones later, after the mayor. Thanks.
Yeah, Mayor Gondak, go ahead. Thanks very much, I appreciate you accommodating me. We have been talking about chlorides, and the point has been made that some of the de-icing materials that we use have crept into the soil and led to this problem. What are other ways that chlorides occur, if it's not just de-icing?
That's a fantastic question. I don't know if you have expertise, Russ?
I can't answer that question specifically. I don't think we have any geologists in the room, but what I can tell you is that the soil samples that we're seeing along the Bear's Paw feeder main here, you know, 8,000 milligrams per liter of chloride levels are, I don't even think I can stress how high that is compared to what we would consider background levels in the remaining, in the other soil samples of the feeder main network. Which is why that further study needs to be done on, and how this is evolving, because the 2014 samples even show moderate, it's very unusual to see chlorides in Calgary's soils along the feeder mains, if that can answer your question. 8,000 is not, would not be natural. I'm not a geologist, but based on the soil investigations done, it's an extreme event, extreme concentration, I don't know of any other natural way of it to occur. That's part of the future investigation.
I think that's exactly the point. I can't answer, it's, I'm not aware of any way that chlorides would transport in such a means or such a way. And especially to see uneven distribution of chloride levels where you have moderate to low level chlorides in one location immediately adjacent to an area of high chlorides.
Okay, thank you for that. So your position is that there's further work that needs to be done to understand the chloride situation?
Yes.
Okay. How quickly will that work begin?
We've already started moving ahead with a request for proposal on doing this work, so it will be happening in L.A.
Okay, and you're looking for geological expertise to assist on this one?
Geotechnical and geological.
Okay, thank you for that. What was happening with the Bear's Paw South feeder main earlier this year? I mean, I know that you've got a chart, and once again, the pages themselves aren't numbered, but if I try to figure out what it is, it's attachment two, and I think it's page eight, but it's, in the document, it's number 77 of 596. It's a figure, number 2.8, that talks about South feeder main operations from December 1st to June the 6th. And it looks like the chart is saying that there were shutdowns of the South feeder main during this period, that there was maintenance that was done, and it showed that you then were able to return to service with no pressure spikes.
Good afternoon, my name is Duane Strayer. I'm the project manager with Associated Engineering for this report. So there was some routine work that NMAX needed to do at Bear's Paw that week, that required cycling of pumps on and off to do, I think it was maintenance work that NMAX needed to do. So that's what was reflected, it's not showing, reflected in the subsequent starts and stops of the pumps. I think it was earlier that day.
Okay, because the information, like, there's several different charts that go back to December 1st, there's one that goes back to May.
Okay.
So perhaps it's the May to June period that you're speaking about?
Sorry, I interpreted the question, was the short-term pressure variances. The longer-term information, that's, in the timeframe we had, that's as far back as we went to look for historical, in the sense that it's a short-term historical, but went back to see in the data we had available at the time, to see if there was any anomalies over, I think, six months or something like that. And--
Maybe I can just jump in. In the work in March, we did shut down the Bear's Paw South feeder main. Part of that was to prepare for the work, the inspection of the pipediver that was to occur in November of this year. We also took that opportunity to replace some air valves in the valve chambers along one section of the Bear's Paw South feeder main. The air valves let the, enable better flow in the feeder main, so we took the opportunity to maintain those at the same time.
Okay, so you did some maintenance work in March, and your plan was to do a greater amount of work in November?
Yes, that's correct.
So the question becomes for people, when you were doing the staging work in March, why didn't you address doing the maintenance sooner?
The maintenance piece, or the work in November, was actually the pipediver inspection. And in order to have that completed, we needed to get access to insert the pipediver. So part of that shutdown was to prepare for that work. And there was a thing called a hot tap. We had to, we had to put a port in the header of the South feeder main. So we were preparing to do that work. So we were getting to that, and then the pipediver would have been inserted in November. This was preparatory work, so that that could occur.
Okay. So you had to put this hot tap in in March, you had to do the preparatory work. Is there a reason that November was chosen? Is it, what's the reason for that time of year?
Lower demand. So as we, as we know, and all learned in the summertime, the demand is higher in November. Flows really drop off, and we're able to shut that, run the feeder main at a lower level to enable that inspection without any restrictions or impact to customers.
Okay, so it was your best estimate that if you did the work in November, putting the pipediver in, that you wouldn't have to shut down the pipe in its entirety like we saw in the summer?
Correct.
Okay, so did you at that time create a strategy for redundancy, should something have gone wrong? And the pipediver either detected something or caused a problem itself that didn't allow for free flow of water?
We didn't have a strategy for redundancy, per se, because it's not available, but we would kind of enact our emergency procedures and enable either repair, or if we had to pull out the pipediver, we would have executed that as quickly as possible and be prepared for that.
Maybe I'll elaborate a little bit. Part of the emergency preparedness that Ryan is speaking of included how the system would be operated with that asset no longer in service to facilitate the inspection. So which bypasses need to be in place, which valves need to be turned, where the water would be routed, what the water quality would look like, et cetera. So it wasn't redundancy, per se, we just used a different vernacular, but the plan was in place.
Okay, so when we talk about redundancy, there seems to be this feeling that, you know, we don't have it, because we don't have a spare pipe lying alongside this one for whenever we have to shut this one down. Is that what you mean by redundancy?
Yes, we mean major system redundancy, the ability for us to take an asset out of service for an extended duration of time and have the customer see no negligible impact.
Okay, so the redundancy that we talked about this summer, where we said we did have redundancy in the system, because we were using the Glenmore facility, was that intended redundancy, or did we just happen to get by because it worked?
The city of Calgary is absolutely lucky in that we have two water treatment plants on two distinct water sources. So we do have a fundamental built-in redundancy through where those facilities are located. We do have a master plan, a long-range plan, that has identified a number of projects that are required for us to put in place to build the required redundancy as the system grows and develops. Those projects are underway, and you'll hear more about those in February, and they will be providing the full redundancy to this feeder main. During the event of the outage, what we did was system operational changes to provide what we consider to be indoor demand, or best-case demand, as Director Bouchard said, 500 megaliters a day was what we were striving to achieve in the way that we operated the system differently.
And just to answer your question directly, you asked whether or not there was always a plan to use the plant in an emergency like this. Absolutely. We use all the parts of our system when we have a failure to make sure that we can have continuity of service.
I think that may be part of our problem in delivering this message to the public. We're using words like redundancy, we're using words like a planned outage, and, I mean, the bigger question here is, when you created the water network in Calgary, and you were thinking about what might happen into the future, was there a point in time where your teams thought, because this feeder main is a major supplier of water, if something happens to it, like if it's the number four scenario, high impact, you know, high issue, can't remember exactly what it is, did you contemplate what redundancy looks like and then implement it into the system?
Yes to your first question, in terms of, not just a single point in time. We do that on a regular basis. We renew our water long-range plan every five years, and sometimes there's adjustments made based on where growth is happening in the city. Because at the end of the day, this is a distribution network, and you need to be able to get the water to where it's actually needed. But we do that on a regular basis to answer that question, do we have sufficient redundancy? What is sufficient redundancy? What additional investments do we need to make to add to that redundancy? So the North Calgary Water Servicing Project is just one example of an investment that we were working to deliver to address that redundancy. And there's other examples in our system where we've invested incrementally into our system to improve the redundancy of the system, depending on which part of our system might fail.
Okay. Do you think the way that you've communicated these things with council in the past, do you think that's been sufficient?
In hindsight, probably not. And it's something that we will take away and learn from. I think that we've already done that, to many, many ways.
And I think this is an important thing to highlight, because it's a delicate balance between catastrophizing and planning for a catastrophe. And so if we have learned anything from the situation that we went through, do you think that your ability to communicate potential catastrophic failure, whether it's water, whether it's anything else, do you think your approach to that has changed because of what you went through?
Yes, I think that these reports are an example of how we're changing. And we are having conversations in terms of, how do we have better conversations with council to make sure that that's understood on both sides, on the administration and council side?
Okay, so for example, when it comes to the Chlorides and Soil Conditions Report, how do you plan to bring that back to us? How do you plan to bring that information back?
I'm not going to be here, so I'm going to ask.
Thanks for that, Francois. That's something that I'll have to take away and seriously consider. I hear your points loud and clear, and I think that's, we do definitely, to Dr. Bouchard's point, need to do a better job in how we communicate with council and the public, especially than taking this on the chlorides study, yes.
Okay. Can you understand, too, how frustrating it was to not get updates over the period that you were doing this investigation?
Again, I hear you loud and clear, and absolutely yes. I'm mindful as well, too, that as an engineer, there's a fine balance on releasing the amount of information that we can safely do ahead of our due diligence and proper practice that's required of us as professional engineers. But as well, too, is providing information that we can get out as quickly as possible to allow Calgarians to understand the scope and nature of what we're dealing with. So absolutely yes, that's something that we do need to reconsider and figure out.
And I think, Mayor, I'll just add that you have our commitment as senior administration to bring the information regularly when it's available, and balancing that piece between the technical information and the knowledge, and making sure that's communicated in a way that folks can understand and we can easily explain.
Yes.
Thank you. And just two sort of remaining questions here. One has to do, again, with communications. I think it's really important to highlight the fact that a failure to communicate is not necessarily a failure of a communications team or a department. So my question is, have you taken away from this experience that you need to be engaged with your communications folks, particularly the crisis communicators, early and often?
Short answer, yes. What I've also experienced as well, too, is for us to also work with the community in more creative ways. So I was absolutely impressed in the way that we were working, not just through formal communications, but as well, too, with our business relations team, Mr. Gerolo and his team, on working with individual Calgarians, understanding, listening to them, and trying to make their lives better through this as well, too. So absolutely yes, though.
Okay, and so then the experiences that you had, particularly with the second tranche of repairs that took place in September, have you created a guidebook or protocols of how you engage with community, how you make sure that any of our city hired vendors are working with the community, whether it's community association or business community or directly with residents? Have you prepared a debrief and a protocol document for how to do this into the future?
So that protocol document isn't finished. There's a couple of things that we're doing. One of them is actually developing a policy around, and I know that it's not quite the same, but from the citizen's perspective, it is exactly the same, which is, when we're doing construction, how do we work with the communities and with the businesses? So there's a policy being developed that I believe is being brought back early next year, if I remember correctly. The other thing that we're doing as part of the experiences that we've gained is having conversations with water services in terms of, how can we do that not just for major construction projects, but also for all the regular maintenance and repairs that are done? How do we find that right balance of communicating-- How do we find that right balance of communicating enough but not over-communicating to the communities to make sure that they understand what's going on? So we're definitely working on what you're proposing.
Okay, thank you for that. Last question. There seems to be some question from people that the city's not taking accountability or responsibility for what happened here. How do you respond to that?
We take the supply of safe drinking water to heart. And I've been in this business for too many years, and this is the most important thing that I've ever done, is being able to work in this industry. And a failure of any size is important, and we need to respond to. An event like this summer really rocks our world in terms of, what do we do next and how do we change our practices?
I might just add, Mayor, I just would simply say, this entire process that we have gone through since the event, the timeline that Steve showed on, I can't remember what slide it is, I think is demonstrative of the accountability that we are taking, coming to these meetings, answering every question, and making sure that if we can't answer a question today, that we answer it in the coming days. So I just would say, this entire process that we're going through.
Okay, I would encourage you, if you're asked that direct question, because that question did come from the media, who's accountable for this? It's an immediate answer, we are. We're accountable, we're responsible. We have an obligation to deliver strong public service, and when it doesn't happen, we're accountable.
Absolutely.
Absolutely.
Thank you for that. Thank you, Chair, for your latitude.
Yeah, no worries. We will go to Councilor Duman.
Well, most everything's been gone through. Couple of quick ones. I didn't quite catch, what was the life expectation of this pipe? I've heard 50, I've heard 100. Is there such a thing, or do we just kind of throw a dart?
I'm going to look at Mr. Duick at this.
So, these feeder main pipes aren't, don't, aren't really polished with a life expectancy. So if I go back to an asset management perspective, there are, you know, 100-plus-year-old pipes that are, if you excavate them today, distribution or transmission, if you excavate today, look brand-new. There are pipes that have been installed in the city of Calgary, you know, eight years later, there's nothing left. Pipe expectancy, from my perspective, is related to the condition of the pipe and the soils it's in, and the standards it's installed with. We would have expected that this pipe, with the right management, would have lasted, yes, 100 years or more. And there's, does that answer your question?
That's, like I said, so basically, it's a dart throw. I'm sorry, I'm totally facetious, I should not have said that. I understand what you're saying, that it's a determination of outside influences effect.
Most engineers will not put a pipe in the ground unless it has an expected life of over 100 years, we'll put it that way. So we would expect that the designers of this pipe, when they put it in the ground, would have expected it to last 100-plus years.
Okay.
50 years would not have been economical.
I know we're not really here to talk about the other areas, but do we have any other high-potential break points? Not that, not asking about whether they're potentially about to break, but the, as that chart showed, your high probability and your high-use area, kind of it?
In short, yes, we do actually have pipes that are within that quadrant three, if that's what you're referring to, yes.
Okay, and are we obviously doing expected inspections, inspections on those in a more rapid manner, considering the situation?
Yes, we're actually balancing the condition assessment on those pipes, as well, too, is condition assessment and repair on other pipes within the network that are actually having failures or high likelihood of failure. So it's that balancing act, yes.
And I'm probably asking the wrong person, because I think the right one left about an hour ago. Are we considering changing our usage of material on the roads and/or locations of where we use these materials?
Again, that's a conversation we've just recently opened with mobility.
Okay, pretty much everything else was asked. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you.
Okay, Councilor Mann.
Yeah, thank you so much for the presentation and all the work on this. I know it's really hard to present when, you know, you're dealing in probabilities and people want absolute answers, and you can't always give those, but I found the report really interesting. And it's also a highly technical conversation, which is not easy to have with the public either. I guess my first question is, when you come back, and actually, the first question is, when you come, are you going to come back with that asset management quadrant and present it to council? Is that something you're doing internally?
That's a fantastic question. Traditionally, in the past, we have not brought our asset management plans forward, but it is something that definitely we consider as part of our conversations, if that's something that would be of interest.
Well, I think what's maybe more important is that there's a lot of assertions about where we have redundancy, where we don't have redundancy, where that redundancy, like where it would make good sense to have it, and not, like in terms of, we only have finite public dollars and we're dealing in probabilities, so where are we making those investments? I guess my question is, or maybe recommendation, if we don't have it, is, I guess the question is, where can people learn better about where the system redundancies exist where they need to, so we're not hearing people say things like, there's zero redundancy in the system? Where can people get educated on that? And if the answer is, that's probably not out there in a significant way, I guess my question is, when we come back and in further reports, how could we do that? Because I think that there's a certain amount of work here of just restoring trust in the water system that just needs to be done, which is going to be a very layperson explanation of how the water system works and where we make investments and why.
Absolutely. There's actually, I love the fact that the slide's back up here. So we do a couple of points that you had made, so I do actually anticipate us coming forward in February of next year to talk about those redundancy options that Dr. Bouchard and Ms. Huber were talking about, as well, too, is giving you periodic updates of where we're at to ensure that we are getting redundancy. So you'll get more information specific to the redundancy, as well as we build resiliency into the pipe. So what are we looking, are we looking at microtunneling options or repair options? And what are the impacts to citizens as well, too, as we undertake a lot of this work and start to plan this work? Second part of that is the longer term. So again, the bottom of the slide, we talk about the infrastructure status report. So in March, March 6th of next year, we will be opening a conversation, not just specifically on our feeder main network and our entire water distribution network, but all asset classes. Looking further ahead into the future, into, as we prepare for the 2027 to 2030 Service Planner Budget Approach, we will like to have a conversation with IPC and council around our corporate asset management plan. So that corporate asset management plan is really a compendium, if you will, of all of our asset management plans that we do have, whether it's a bridge asset, whether it's pavement assets, which you just would have seen very recently, or if it's on the feeder main network. So we can deep dive into any one of those subject matters, or subject areas, if you wish, as, when the time comes.
Thank you. Yeah, I think that'll be a really important conversation, because it's not just about water, it's about all of our assets. I guess my follow-up question is about the chlorides. I know that chlorides are playing a role, but there is also in the report saying that there are parts of the pipe where there was no correlation despite there being high levels of chlorides. And so, when you're doing all this additional monitoring, it's interesting information, but if it doesn't necessarily have a direct correlation, is our main monitoring then still that acoustic monitoring system? Can you just speak to me a little bit more about that? Because on the one hand, it's having a correlation, but sometimes not, so how does that additional information actually help you? Or is it really, it's good information for us to help understand, but we're really relying on that acoustic monitoring system?
So we are relying on the acoustic monitoring system to continually check in and report on the condition of the structural integrity of the Bears Potts Fielder Main. As well, I should also mention, we do have acoustic fiber optic up in the McKnight feeder main, so we've been monitoring that piece of pipe for quite some time now as well. So the acoustic fiber optic monitoring system, as well as temporary monitoring system that we've been working with Pure Technologies on, it all forms part of our overall monitoring plan on this piece of pipe. But to your point, it's multifaceted. We don't just use acoustic fiber optic as part of our overall approach to ensure structural integrity, we use other approaches. So things like soil sampling and soil monitoring, as I've already mentioned, that is something that we will be expanding, our soil monitoring, soil sampling program, as well as monitoring pressure. So we do measure, monitor and measure pressure on this particular pipe and other parts of the pipe in the network.
Okay, is it fair to say that the, in it, like, so the main steps that we've taken are, we're going to increase the soil monitoring, we have the acoustic monitoring, we're going to monitor pressure? Are those, I just want to make sure those are the three things that we're kind of doing differently now?
As well, too, is updating our risk profile, because we do need to definitely consider a higher level of consequence and not just focus, as was previously discussed and mentioned, on just the likelihood of failure. We do need to incorporate the consequence of failure as part of our calculations.
Okay, and then, do we have any understanding? I know that we've been monitoring the pipe and there's been like two snaps, which is, obviously, when we had a break, there were like 200. Do we have a sense of how those breaks happen? Will they always just kind of slowly break, break, break? Or do you have sort of a big break that you can't always predict? Like, will we have enough for fair warning, I guess, is my question, through that acoustic monitoring?
Short answer is yes, we do, actually, we will have a fair amount of fair warning. So the slide that I presented, both the wire breaks that we've mitigated, the locations that we made those structural improvements, but as well, too, is where we're monitoring. So we do have about 10 locations that are 30 or so wire breaks. So those are the ones that are a specific, special interest of us. So actually, since we had reported through Dr. Bouchard's information just a couple of weeks back, we've seen actually three additional wire breaks. One of them on a location of very low structural incidence. So we've gone from five wire breaks to six wire breaks. So it's really, we're still in a monitor situation on that particular pipe, but in other parts of the pipe. So we have seen actually one incidence where we've gone from 30 wire breaks to 31 wire breaks. Categorically, it still falls within the location where we're monitoring and repair when practical, but we're not to a point where we're saying that we have to take the pipe immediately out of service and make those repairs. We're still in a situation where we're able to monitor and repair when it is practical to us.
Okay, and are there like industry standards as to define what would be a significant number of breaks before you take action? How do you make those decisions?
I don't think it's an industry standard, if you will, but, Mr. Duick?
If you, we do have that chart that we do use, but there is no industry standard. It's, actually, this is a new area of work for the water industry, to be honest, is the finite element analysis combined with the operating pressures specific to that pipe, the soil, I shouldn't, not soil conditions, soil profile, so how much soil is on that pipe, et cetera. It's very pipe-specific. So what I didn't see mentioned was, there is an American Waterworks Association, and there is a large pipe diameter user form. These groups get together and they discuss, you know, when they make these decisions, et cetera. So there is not an industry standard of wet number, but the industry does discuss what those thresholds might look like. And, but for feedermains, it's specific to each individual feeder main, and not just the length, that exact location.
Okay, yeah, thank you. I recognize this is highly technical, and we're dealing in probabilities and many factors. So I appreciate you answering those questions and look forward to more discussion on this as we go.
Okay, thank you, Councilor Wyness, second round.
Thanks. Let's talk a little bit about the comments about the pressure on the water system. And we were talking about development when you're answering Mayor Gondex's questions, but it's a regional water network. So how are we factoring in the pressures on this for the fact that we're doing Airdrie, Chestamere, Strathmore, Tzina, industrial outside of city limits? And so I kind of, the answer kind of challenged me in that we were kind of setting the tone of, we're only thinking about it at city of Calgary limits.
No, all the work that we do is based on the fact that we have in-city customers as well as regional customers, and the modeling that we do is to understand how our system is performing and what pressures we have across our system for the whole system that we own and operate. So I'm not sure if I'm answering your question, other than to say, there's no distinction between those, they're customers.
Yeah, but we spent a little bit of time talking about, like, city of Calgary building and our industry pressures of how we're building houses, yet we can't stop Airdrie from building. They're growing at a fast rate, too, but we're still going to have to supply potable water. So I just kind of wanted to challenge a little bit of how we were talking about a regional water network.
So we have regular meetings with our regional customers to understand what their growth needs are going to be. That is then articulated in a master servicing agreement for each of those regional customers so that we understand what their needs are going to be. And we take all of that information in our planning to ensure that the infrastructure that we have will accommodate that growth over time.
Great. My next question has to do with the steel reinforced wires. And I'm just kind of curious, at our evaluation of what impacts of, what was going on in the industry of steel manufacturing at the time of production? Do you think that led to some of the decline or issues we are having today?
I am not aware of any indication of any issues or concerns with the manufacture of steel and the use of the steel specifically in this particular piece of pipe.
Did we evaluate it? Because I can Google it and find what was going on in the industry then.
So, that's a, that's a long answer. So here in the C301 industry, a lot of reference to a company called Interpace Pipe, for example, that had a lot of failures in the States. And I need to really, really clarify that Calgary and Western Canada's issues and their pipe suppliers are very different than the US and Eastern Canada. Although this pipe might have come from a manufacturer in Eastern Canada, we need to really, like, separate, you know, where each company sources their material? We don't have that information for this specific pipe, where those materials were come, came from. But to answer your question, we do know, and it's not a secret, the city of Calgary knew this, and this has been part of the asset management plans, I'm sure, is that the, you know, the 1975 steel does not meet current standards. It might have by chance, but the standards at the time do not meet current standards. So to say a pipe steel was defective is, or not manufactured appropriately, isn't maybe necessarily an accurate statement. It was manufactured appropriately to the standards of the time of the day, and our, the laboratory testing that Pure Technologies did confirmed that, so it's not just a guess. And we, but we do know that it is manufactured with weaknesses that, and we knew, I should say, the industry and the city of Calgary, any, any big pipe user knows of those weaknesses, it's not a secret. But you can't just have a brittle wire and it fail magically. There has to be conditions for it to fail. And I think the city of Calgary, as I've shown, they did soil sampling to see if those conditions were right for that brittle failure to occur. In 2014, those conditions were, did not appear to be correct. So it's not just a question of the materials, but also of the environment it's in. So...
Because, like, that's what I'm trying to get at, like, what we knew at the '70s at fabrication, and the economic crises that were leading to a, they did the best they could with what they got and what the engineers had determined at the time. Like, we went from 1930s, this was bomb-proof, to, oh, it was so good, we can, like, take the pedal off, and we did an experiment, that's life. We wouldn't be able to fly an airplane if we didn't fail a few times. And so that's kind of what I'm getting at. So then we have this steel that we know has its weaknesses due to the standards of the time and available resources. Did that lead to some of the inconsistencies in why some places of the pipe were failing more than other places? Like, that's what I'm getting at.
No, the steel used throughout the pipe would appear to be quite consistent. You know, this, the only thing that's inconsistent with the pipe was, was the wrapping, the spacing of those wires, but that's, that's not necessarily a structural issue. Even with those deficiencies, we would call them today deficiencies, I want to be very careful with my words here, even with those 1975 standards, you still need the right conditions for those wires to fail. And, and what we're seeing is that those conditions did exist and they evolved over time. So, no, we don't, we can't attribute it directly to the steel and the city of Calgary. And the City of Calgary was fully aware of those. And, and, and to my knowledge, this was the first time this type of failure attributed to hydrogen embolism and stress corrosion cracking related to those 1975 standards has, has occurred in the City of Calgary, to my knowledge.
Okay. And then I noticed on another map, which I've lost in this chart, we go from Bear's Paw where we're doing steel pipe into PCCP pipe. I'm just kind of curious for Admin's answer of what was the decision to do steel into PCCP pipe? Is it an indication of where we're potentially going to replace all of this pipe too? And I got a second part to that, is based on our learnings of the chloride attacking this pipe, building your main feedermain under a road network, is, is that a decision that we should probably reevaluate or cities in the future when you're doing infrastructure development? It's a long one.
So I, I'll let Francois or Mr. White answer the second part of the question, but I can answer the first part of the question in that PCCP pipe, in this particular case, C301E, so large diameter pipe, you'll see it throughout, throughout the world. This pipe is typically used in large diameter applications because it's considered a cost-effective pipe material or composite of materials to, to address earth loading and, and high pressures. This pipe is actually typically used in much higher pressure applications. So as the City of Calgary, as a public entity, they likely would have gone to market to, to see what the cheapest option was with a given set of standards or specifications. And it's not uncommon for, in the world, for, for this type of pipe to be selected and still be selected for that application because of its economic value, as it was a public utility. So to go, based on my knowledge of the system, to go from steel to C301 would just have been a contractual construction tender.
More economics rather than like, a, a risk analysis saying that we should, with new information of engineering, steel is probably better, or it's just, they were equal and it was cost.
Back in 1975, when it was built?
No, 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 from the, the adjustment addition to Bear's Paw. When you look at that, I don't know how many kilometers it is, but it goes, it shows on the map, it goes steel into PCCP. And so it seems like at the time of the production of Bear's Paw, we made a decision change.
That would have just been a.
Under game?
A contractual, yeah, public tender issue.
Yeah. Like, at the end of the day, most of the way that we procure pipe is through specifications. This is what the pipe needs to be able to do in terms of its performance, how it needs to behave, what kind of soil it is in, and whether or not it has the ability to resist the, any chemistry within the soil that would attack the pipe. Once you define the specification, there are many different materials that could meet those specifications. So as long as they meet the needs of the application, then yes, we will look for the most cost-effective solution. That's part of our job as public servants, is make sure that our service continues to be affordable. Your question of whether or not we will continue to look, use PCCP pipe? I don't think that we can answer that today. We will continue to advance the specifications with additional knowledge. So for example, this pipe that we're talking about actually had a concrete mortar that was resistant to sulfates, because we knew that that was one of the factors and therefore as part of the specifications, we incorporated that. Over time, specifications improve to make sure that we get the best outcome as possible. And one of them is longevity of assets. But at the end of the day, you still have to look at the total lifecycle of the asset to make the right decision in terms of the best interest for the public. You also had a question around whether or not putting a pipe under a road is, is the best solution. If it was just a question of being able to lay pipes down, I can tell you that I prefer to put it in a field as opposed to under a road, because every time that we have to do any kind of maintenance, repair, we have to dig up the road and we disrupt traffic. But the reality is that our urban fabric is such that you don't have a lot of options in terms of not using roads as the primary solution to where you put your pipes. Now, you might say, well, we have a TUC. Why wouldn't we have all our feedermaines on the TUC not under roads? I can guarantee you that our system would not have the resilience that it needs, the redundancy that it needs, if all we had was one big pipe that wrapped around the city. We know that there are cities that have that. London, in the UK, not, not Canada, has a huge pipe that actually operates both as storage and conveyance. But if they only relied on that, their system wouldn't be able to operate. You need to have a network that is throughout the city, not just on the outskirts of the city. So would I like to be able to put pipes on, in greenfields? Absolutely. But that's not the reality in terms of how we build our cities. I don't think that we'll ever get to a point where we build cities where we have the luxury of putting pipes not under roads.
Awesome. Thank you for explaining that. I think that was a good answer and, and the challenges we face even with growth and utilities. My kind of last line of questioning is, in the lead up to the maintenance that we were prepping for, how many times were we turning the water supply off and on? Like, was there surges, like, and, and how, because again, Mayor Gondak was asking that. What was that process like?
I don't know, Mr. Kidd, if you're able to answer the number of times, frequency that we had taken pipe in and out of service?
Sure. It was just the, the one time in, in March, we, we shut it off to enable that work. And then when that was completed, we turned it back on in a slow, kind of controlled manner.
And then, when we have to move water around the city, are we ever, like, having to turn the pipe off overnight or adjusting and throttling the water pressures?
Like, typically not in this one. We're, we're using our other pump stations and how, and, and using the valves and pumps in those to draw water and move it around the city. So we are typically not altering or, or like shutting off this feedermaine on a regular basis.
So then a lot, it was only that one time that, that pump was ever adjusted or throttled?
Well, we actually closed off valves so the flow was not happening in that feedermaine and, and drained it down as well too, to enable the replacement of those air valves like I was, like I was mentioning. So that, it was actually out of service in, in, at, in that March timeframe.
Yeah. I think that maybe the question that you're asking is during normal operations, do we turn pumps on and off? Absolutely. That's why we have them and that's why we have different banks of, of pumps. That's normal operations, but we have protocols in terms of how we turn pumps on and how we turn them off to minimize the impact on the system. We want to change the flow conditions as gradually and smoothly as possible. That's part of normal operating practice.
Did we look at any of those operating practices for, during the evaluations we're doing?
So I do believe that that's what associate engineering did when they looked at our historical records. So they looked at the historical records of what were the pressures in this feedermaine at the pump station, what were, what were we doing in terms of the pumps? And, and what they've come back with is that the pressures that we were operating were well within the capabilities of the pipe, that we weren't stressing that pipe system. But maybe, Mr. Dewick wants to expand on that.
And yeah, just to follow up, because like, given what we know about the pipe now with the deterioration of the steel reinforcements, would, could those pressures have been too much stress on the network and not, because again, we said we didn't, previous answers.
So, to expand on that, I think I already addressed, you know, Counselor Spencer's surge question, so I'm not going to maybe repeat that. But to, to speak to cyclical loading? Cyclical loading is always hard on a pipe, always. Not going to dispute that. Anyone in the industry will know that. However, the cyclical loading, as, as Mr. Bouchard said, was well within the, the structural capacity of this pipe. And what, what I can do from a forensic standpoint is that when we look at how those wires failed, it wasn't due to cyclical loading. So pressures and on-off aren't what caused the failure. Can we rule out a swan surge event 50 years ago? I can't do that. But, but I can tell you that the cyclical loading that's occurring on a regular basis didn't contribute to this failure.
All right. Thank you.
Okay. We have, let me look here. Counselor Chabot.
You. Yeah. So a couple of things I want to clarify. In the report, it's, we know what ultimately was the cause, but not specifically what caused it, i.e. there's, there's no definitive, this is the smoking gun that's caused all these problems. Am I correct in that assumption?
You are correct. It's actually multifactorial. There are a number of reasons why that contributed to the, the failure of the feedermaine.
Okay. There is something that, a question that will, keeps sticking in my mind and, and I may, may not have any impact on it, but when we were talking about replacing the air valves, to improve the efficiency of the pipe, and knowing what little I do know about water and that is highly incompressible, and I can't help but wonder if we may not have inadvertently contributed to some of the stresses on the pipe by eliminating that compressible component by taking out all the air out of the pipe? Has that been considered in all of this?
That was not something that's considered a factor, is that correct? The impact of removal or work on the air valves?
Work on the air valves would not have impacted the failure itself, but, but to, to speak to your point, air valves absolutely are critical to the function of a pipeline, including the reduction of, of surge and transient pressures. And that's why the maintenance would have been done to, to, to allow for, I mean, the combination air valves that are installed in the City of Calgary do multiple factors. They allow for draining, allow for filling, and they allow for air to escape during operations, so air that's generated during pump operations. And then they also are, are put in place to minimize these transient pressure events. So they do four things and that's, sorry?
Shock avoidance.
So, but the maintenance of those air valves to, to turn it on and off would not have, is sort of, I guess, I don't want to be rude, but irrelevant to the, to the, to the why it failed?
No, no, it wasn't, you're not being rude at all. It was the, the way I interpreted initially from what I was told is that those air valves were there primarily to remove air out of the pipe. And that's, your point though is that it's not to eliminate air, but rather to remove excessive amounts of air. So that's a, a good answer. I appreciate that. The, the monitoring system that we have in place, albeit that we may not have had this system in place previously, we had monitoring equipment, but not necessarily the same monitoring equipment we have now. The fiber optic equipment that we have for what's referred to as acoustic monitoring enables us to more accurately determine where the failures have occurred, more accurately than previously, correct?
That's correct. We do have, we did install acoustic monitoring equipment in preparation for the insertion extraction of the pipe diver. That installation was in alignment with the timing of the air valve repair and replacement that happened earlier in the spring. And we have installed the first phase of two phases of acoustic fiber optic monitoring equipment that is within this feedermaine.
Okay. There's still more to go, right?
That's correct, yes. We do have plans for installing a second phase of feedermaine acoustic fiber optic monitoring in Q1 or spring of this year, sorry.
So that will enable us to be more proactive in determining what failures are occurring, if they're in significant volumes at a particular location, so that we can then take more proactive action on preventing any, any catastrophic failures, correct?
That's exactly correct. The acoustic fiber optic monitoring allows us to, relatively speaking, pinpoint where we're hearing a wire break within a one meter accuracy, or within, actually, I should say within, sorry, an entire pipe segment, which would be about, say, 4.88 meters, but within about a meter accuracy.
Insofar as the feedermaine and some of its functionality, which included, utilized to feed regional storage containers to then be redistributed from those storage locations and pressurized through localized pumps, this, insofar as our regional customers are concerned, do we provide them with pressurized water system?
By its very nature, yes. The, the only way that you get water to move is by pressurizing it. So there is a pressure that the regional customers experience at the end of the pipes or pipes that feed into their system.
But is it part of the distribution network or do they have their own pumps to distribute it out to the, to their customers?
Oh, we, we provide a service to the city boundary and then they have their own systems. That might be a combination of underground storage as well as secondary pump stations to move the water within their community.
So they always have maintained the same pressure that we have throughout the rest of our system?
Well, I'm not exactly sure what you're asking. They would ensure, they would ensure that within, oh, sorry.
Sorry. More so in regards to volume. So we have a commitment through the master service agreement to provide them with X amount of, of liters per day, which is, I guess, we're capable of delivering that and then some through the pipes that we service them with. Are those pipes always full, full on or is there, you know, does it vary as far as, you know, is it always fully operational or is it? I'm, I'm thinking more from a volume perspective. Are we always running them a flat out? Or is there times when they get scaled back or the volumes get reduced or?
Well, the flows can, depending on which regional customer we're servicing, can fluctuate over the day. They will dictate how much water they need based on the demand as well as the amount of storage that they have. We coordinate our operations with them to make sure that our system and their local systems operate as efficiently as possible and meet their needs as per the agreement.
Okay. In, in the electrical world, which, you know, when we talk about flow, current, volumes, there's a lot of similarity between electricity and, and water, at least to some degree. And in the electricity system, we have things like capacitors and inductors to, to reduce or to buffer some of those hard on-offs kind of things, insofar as our external customers are concerned, if they ever have any, or even within our own internal system, including like in my house, my dishwasher that has really hard on-off valves and, and washing machine, there's sufficient, I guess, buffering in our system to absorb any of those kind of hard on-offs, right?
So the buffering will happen naturally because the way that we get the water to our regional customers is through our feedermaine system primarily. But there's always, if you like, a relief valve or a buffer by the very fact that we have underground storage reservoirs also throughout our system. So I'm not sure if I'm answering the question for you, other than to say that it's not what our regional customers are doing that will cause us to turn our pumps on and off more frequently than what we need to do to make sure that our reservoirs are full.
Right. And those reservoirs, are they pressurized?
They're not pressurized. Those reservoirs are, the pressure is defined by the water level and the elevation of those reservoirs.
Okay. So hence the natural.
Sorry, getting a little complicated or technical?
No, no, it's, no, I appreciate the answer. It's, so that's your, your natural buffer as you referred to.
Yep.
Okay. Thanks. That's all the questions I had. Thanks for this report. Oh, actually, I do have one other question. Part of the, the investigation that we're doing, a third-party investigation, will this report be provided to that third-party entity that's doing a? this report be provided to that third party entity that's doing a deeper dive into our overall system?
So the independent review will have access to whatever information they request. That might include, if they want to have this report, it's absolutely available to them. They also have the choice of saying that they want to do their own pipe inspection. We have no control over what they want to do in terms of the scope, and that's appropriate. It's really for them to decide.
Just wanted to make sure it wasn't proprietary.
No.
Okay, thanks. No further questions. Appreciate it.
Thank you. I know Counsel Dolly Wall has another question, but I'm just going to insert myself in the queue, and then we can get going on this agenda and move it. So just a couple of things. Near the end of the presentation, I heard you say that the likelihood of the Bears Paw cell feeder main, quote, extremely low compared to others in the system. So two questions with that. What pipes have a higher likelihood to rupture? And how are we going to address those?
Thank you for the question. So as I did note, there were pipes that were identified in quadrant two. So as an example, I believe it was a Habalta 52nd Street. So 52nd Street is something that we do have at our radar right now currently. It is experiencing leaks, and it is something that we do want to undertake next year, as a matter of fact, as part of our condition assessment program, and to make the necessary repairs or replacement.
Okay. I'm going to ask some operational questions, and and the reason I'm going to ask these questions is twofold, from the public speaker talking about airplanes in May Day, and then Counsel Wyne asks his questions, and my experience working in pools. So when we turn water off and on, and we need to, I'm assuming, talk to each other, so you've got one treatment plant talking to another treatment plant, there needs to be water shifting, what is the operation of tracking that? So is it phone call? Is it logbook? Are the plane crashes, or is it a black box? This is our drinking water. So what mechanisms are in place right now for people to talk to each other? Because that's humans, right?
Absolutely. So I can assure you that we take the operation of our of our treatment plants and distribution system very, very seriously. If you're actually happy to show anybody coming to, well, not anybody, but members of council or this committee coming into the Glenmore Water Treatment Plant, there is a specific control center where an operator sits there 24 hours a day, seven days a week, not the same one, but we've got we've got shifts. Somebody is sitting in that chair looking at all of the information across our system, our reservoir levels, what's going on at the Bears Paw Treatment Plant, what's going on at Glenmore, what's going on at the different pump stations, 24/7. So they notice different either alarms or things that are happening. They take action to move water differently, start up pumps, send out maintenance crews all of the time. So they would also then coordinate with some with some other field staff, if it's a distribution issue that has to be responded to, but there is somebody sitting there, and they have all of the information through our SCADA and monitoring systems that come into there, and they have visual, visual data that they are looking at on a regular basis.
Sorry about that. Okay, so I'm just going to talk a little bit about technology and the technology we have these days and the money that we can put into systems. So if anything, like, I'm assuming these are tracked, these logs are manual, like paper and like logs, are they?
No, the most of, most of the, I'll say, information at our at our are critical processes. So like, in the in the treatment plant, what pumps are on, and at our at our pump stations and reservoirs, we've got real time monitoring information that's tracked down to the minute level about what's going on in that system. Not not broadly across our distribution system, like at your at your house and and those kind of pieces, but at those critical, critical points, we do have real time monitoring that we are looking at every minute, every five minutes.
So is that information confidential to council?
I don't know.
Okay, so if we wanted to request that, could we? I'm just, I'm thinking like time and like point in time, June 5th, 8:45 at night, boom, something happened.
And something, something did happen, and the the first ones to notice something were were the operators there. There was a severe drop in pressure, and they immediately called their supervisor. We started calling our on-call primary response people to go out and take a look, like, hey, what happened here? But we knew about it instantaneously when that break occurred.
Okay, and I really appreciate answering these questions. I know they're not easy, because we talked a little bit about accountability, and we are accountable to our constituents, right? The folks working in operations are accountable to levels that they need to report to, and you are accountable to council and committee to provide us the information. If we're not asking these questions, then it's hard for me to even know, because I wasn't there pushing any buttons. So first of all, do you want to weigh in on anything? You're standing up here.
You know, in in terms of making the the information available, I think that you need to understand that there are thousands of data points that we collect every second or couple of seconds, depending on what it is that we're monitoring. Like, we monitor the temperature of the motors on the pumps, we monitor the pressure at all locations, different locations within our system. So it would really be a question of having to sit down with an individual counselor or a group of counselors to really understand, okay, well, what do you want to see? The other thing I think that is important to highlight is that, at least at this point in time, we don't have voice recording like they do on a plane. So like, what was discussed in the room with the operators? When we get an unusual situation, typically, they'll call in their supervisors and then their supervisors. These are very complex systems, so while we have alarms, they're troubleshooting and using their past experience to figure out how to respond to a certain situation. Whether or not we should have voice recording, I don't know. That will be a conversation for a future time. But again, there's a lot of data to show how the system was performing and what changes we made in response to what we saw. And I'd be happy to show, like, sit down with either you or any other counselor and just give an overview of our monitoring system, show you some of the things and and things that those operators look at.
Yeah, and I think, and and maybe it's not a plane crash, right? But there was a catastrophic failure and affected communities with zero drinking water. And so you have to understand, for a couple of us that were affected and we sat in these meetings, there are still a lot of unanswered questions. So I'm going to ask those questions, and and I feel fair that you've answered to the best of your ability at this point. A couple other questions.
Counsel Sharp, can I?
Yeah.
It it might as well just, and Ryan has offered, you know, sort of showing the information, et cetera. I'm just wondering as well, it may also be worth asking our consultants as well their thoughts about that information and whether they looked at it, and would it be helpful?
Yeah, I think, I mean, if you have looked at it, great. If we can get, what I what I want to say is, like, I don't want to keep throwing money at something and this does not get better at it. So if there's an opportunity to do voice recordings or understanding what's been happening, maybe this is something to learn, a lesson learned we could do, but go ahead with with what you think.
Sorry, I just wanted to answer, the the data points that's from that SCADA system that Ryan mentioned was, is in the report, in those graphs. I mean, I won't speak to, if you want to look at what's further back, but we did look at what the what the actual design and limit, like, design limits of the pumps at the pump stations were and what pressures they could produce. So that was part of the report. But I'll let council speak to what other data they want to obtain.
I I would say that I I've talked to the operators, I've talked to the people that were responding to that. They they had an immediate alarm when that event occurred. They sought to understand the issue as quickly as possible, and they took immediate action. Like, I I I don't think there is any other thing that we could have done quicker to respond to the the event. Like, sure, we don't want the emergency to happen, but that did happen, and we took immediate steps to shut that down and lessen the impact as soon as we could.
I appreciate that.
And maybe just add as well, if you don't mind, thank you. So immediately following the the main break as well, too, we did identify that we did require more data as well, too. As we're monitoring the program, or monitoring the feeder main, pardon me, we identified that we needed more frequent information specific to pressure. So if we're looking for transient pressure, a one or two second monitoring duration may not have been enough to pick up a transient, or something along those lines. So that's actually something that we've been working on with operations to identify more frequent information as part of the system. It's a it's an automated system called PI. So it's it's constantly part of our improvement program.
I know the quote is, PI doesn't lie. So, yeah. What I would say is, I would really like to see, like, if we're going to be putting money into some certain things, I'd like to see it at the operation level, because really, that's like the first and demand of like our water and and what we need. So I think as we go through this process and see what the third party brings back, if that's where we have to spend more of our money for like training and better technology, again, this is our drinking water. This is really important. So I would rather see a lot of that going to those operators than things that we don't need to, like, have. And and so I think that's just where I want to get with my questions, because I could only imagine the stress that those folks had when they saw that happening, and then what was about to happen. So that's kind of where I want to talk about accountability, because that's, that, I'm accountable to answering these questions to my constituents, and they're very technical. So a couple more things I just asked you, what do you think, because we talked about 2014 and 2024, so does this, does that timeframe need more investigation?
In?
In like, understanding like the chloride and what's happened to, you know, like, the the failure of of everything that's been going on, because we mentioned we tested it 2013, but we started really looking at things 2014 and on. Does it require more investigation?
In short, yes. So we did identify that, as I said, there was chloride testing that was completed in 2014 along the feeder main, and we've done further subsequent testing right from Bears Paw all the way down to Memorial Drive, right downtown, in, I believe it was a few hundred meter increments. So we've done some comprehensive soil testing, and it is something, though, that we do need to do further testing and further analysis on, specifically, why are we seeing that there's hotspots, if you will, areas that have high chlorides, and why are we seeing increases over the last 10 years?
Yeah, and and just to add to that, I think that you're you're asking, you know, like, should we be doing testing more frequently? And I think that that's definitely a question that we need to answer. And I also want to correct myself, I said every second, somebody quickly texted me saying, no, it's every 15 seconds, so my apologies for that.
No, no worries. Yeah, I think we do need to do more testing. I mean, so my ask then back to you is, what, like, could have previous councils done better? What can this council do better in making sure, you know, hopefully mitigating these issues in the forward, like, what what can we do better?
Well, it's something that we are actually just exploring as where this soil sampling program fits. So we actually do have a budget right now, a research budget for our feeder main program. For me, it's about the scope and size of the program, so it's not just about this feeder main, but the entire feeder main network as well, too. So that's something we're going to be scoping out with our engineers.
Okay, I'm looking forward to seeing that. I think Counsel Dolly Wall, you had one more question, and then we should be able to go right into.
Yeah, sorry. My question is, does council get access to heat map based on the risk likelihood and consequence of these assets, like pipelines, so we can make that informed decision if there's quadrant one, quadrant two, from capital perspective?
So historically, we have not provided that, but I think that, again, we're talking about a different kind of dialogue between administration and council. I think that this event has taught us that we need to do things differently. So I think that that might be very much a possibility in the future.
I think that would be a great idea, because especially when before the budgets are set and so on and so on, if we can get that heat map based on that. My other question is for the engineering team. I was just going through your report, and SCADA access could be provided remotely, so if someone is interested, you can dial in. On that given day, June 5th, there was going to be a switch happening from pump six was going to go down, high speed, switch was going to happen to seven. Seven didn't work, three, four, so on and so on, it kept happening. There were lots of spikes back and forth on the pressure, and you just said that maybe cyclic loading is not a factor. So are you confidently, can you say that it was just a coincidence that that happened on that day and the pipe failed later in the afternoon?
So the the condition of the pipe was not, was not due to the the pump operations. Obviously, cyclic loading will advance a failure sooner than a pump that doesn't, like, can I, can I say that the pump operations did not directly cause the failure? Yes, but operations of the system, it might have moved it up a day, a two, a month, when when it would have occurred anyway, if that makes sense. It it didn't cause, it didn't cause the structural integrity of the pipe to 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 come apart, if that makes sense.
Yeah.
I'll, I'll just extend on that a little bit for us, and that relates back to my response to the mayor. There was some maintenance work happening that morning, NMAX maintenance work. There was a problem with pump, pump seven tripping, and so it was not pressure, getting up to speed in order to open up a check valve. So it was, it was tripping before it it came online, and there was, this happened successive times that day. So that, yeah, we're not attributing cyclic loading, or not believing cyclic loading was was a result of that, of that tripping.
No, that's good to know. All right, one final question. There was a public speaker who made a comment that typically, there's studies out of University of Utah and so on, that typical life for this kind of pipeline is 50 years, but is that true? What is a typical life? How do we determine that? What factors go into that?
So I think Mr. Dewitt could already answer a similar question, if I'm hearing correctly, that a typical design life, we would have expected in around 100 years or thereabouts, but of course, it depends on the site's specific conditions.
Definitely. We don't know what we don't know, it's up surface. Thank you. That's it for me, Chair.
Great, thank you very much. Counselor Mian would like to move this item, so Counsel Mian, go ahead.
Yeah, I'm happy to move the item, and thanks, colleagues, for all your questions. Thanks to Associated Engineering for their work and to the water team for their continued work on the system. I think when you have a catastrophic failure, it's unfortunate, and you never want to have them, but I think what we have to remember as governors, is our role is not to become experts in water engineering. We can't do that, but it's to ensure that we have the right steps happening. And we've launched an independent investigation, which you know will be coming back. We had this report, APEGA will be looking at it, Audit Committee will be looking at it. We're communicating those findings transparently with the public, we're revising our risk assessments, we're strengthening our monitoring, we're taking corrective action, and importantly, we've seen no evidence of negligence or impropriety thus far, and I think that's incredibly critical. And so I hope that we don't become so focused on this specific asset that is actually getting a lot of attention, that we forget our broader governance job of ensuring all of our assets are getting this level of attention and focus. And we're going to have a bigger conversation about that when the asset monitoring reports come back, so I look forward to those discussions. And with that, I moved.
Okay, sorry, my team's just kind of closed on me. Does anyone else have any debate? Okay, I'm just going to offer a little bit of debate. I just want to say thank you for all your hard work on this, Francois, your team, I would say Mr. Gerillo's team, on an excellent job communicating with the communities, especially those affected, having that kind of wrap up at the end of summer. And it's, it's truly important to say that, I I'll say that I think you guys actually hit the mark on communicating. The reason is, it's up to council to use those tools, if they want to use them, so it's fundamentally up to us if we want to use what you've given us. But you did communicate with the community, and and they weren't upset about that. They, you know, people just were upset a little bit of what's going on, roads ripped up, no one's happy about that, traffic, traffic is a problem in our city to begin with, and when you have major roads ripped up, people are disappointed. There's a couple of things that still, obviously, I feel like, just a little uncertainty and still a little bit of lack, a little bit of, I will say, a little bit of accountability. And the reason is, is that we really need to understand that this doesn't affect a broader infrastructure issues across the city. So I'll say the report identifies great technical causes of the pipeline failure. I will say that the thing I think it lacks is a little bit of the systemic failures in monitoring, maintenance, and decision making, but we can learn from that. I mean, unfortunately, we're learning off of something that happened, and it ruined a lot of people's summer, so it's okay. We've moved on, and we're going to do better. And I will say, the one thing that I think raises concerns in general, not specific just to this failure, is just our our whole infrastructure monitoring and our asset management, and making sure it's robust enough to prevent any future failures. And that's not just water, but we're talking bridges and things like that. So I will say that, you know, I'm looking forward to seeing the future reports, third party review, and and maybe learning and sitting down with the operations team and just looking at like the data. I think it's important, and so that we really understand that. So great work, and thank you for being really patient with us this afternoon with all the questions with that, and nothing else. With that, nothing else to say. Counselor Meehan.
Closed.
All right. Let's go to East Scribe.
Counselor Sharp, your vote, please.
Yes.
Thank you. Chair, Odevold's turn.
Okay. Let's play those results, please. That is carried. And so we are done with this agenda. Can I get a motion to adjourn? Counselor Spencer, anyone opposed to adjournings, seeing, hearing none. We are done for the day. Thank you.